All right, ready Josh? All right, I'll call to order this city council workshop meeting budget discussion. Number one, bright and early Saturday morning, 8:30 August 13th. First of all, call to order, roll call and certification of quorum. Everybody is present except for mayor pro, or the actual mayor. So I get to step up as mayor pro tem. And next up, citizen comments. We've got two registered. First up is Jimmy Davis. Let's go to the podium, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combs Hill Street. Council, let me say, hearing about the tax cap that y'all have set, in my nine years living here, I have never remembered city council setting a maximum tax rate that if my value goes up the full 10%, I see a bill reduction. So I say, thank y'all. That's, I really mean, it's unbelievable. Couple of things, with it being so low, and I heard comment that maybe it can get even below that cap that y'all set, can we make sure that street and sidewalk repairs are funded? Let's not, let's not sacrifice them if we're doing such a great job in lowering everybody's tax bill. I think that's a no brainer. Second part, of course, you're going to be discussing water bills, which is completely different from our tax rate. Enterprise fund is a self sustaining fund. While back, we implemented this asset management software, and as I recall, it was determined at the onset, put half of the cost towards enterprise fund and half of the cost towards general fund. Is there a way that we can look at the assets in the system, really determine, is that allocation appropriate? Whatever can be done, maybe it's 40% is enterprise fund related and 60% general fund related. Whatever you can do to lighten the burden on the enterprise fund, that translates into our water rates. And as I recall, I think for residential, we're the second highest in the, in the area. I believe for businesses, we're the highest. This isn't something you want to be number one at. And speaking on the enterprise fund, I refer you to the Raff Tellis report, page, starting at page 43, it's recommendation number 13, y'all can dig into it. It's talking about staffing levels. The high point for me when I reviewed it was City of Pearland has the second lowest customer accounts per FTE, and the lowest was a small city in Franklin, Tennessee, that had less than 17,000 accounts, and it looks like they were dealing with a bare bones crew. We have 1,430 accounts per FTE. To put in comparison, the city of Sugar Land, our neighbor not far to the west, they have 64% more accounts, and they, they had two and a half less FTEs. At the bottom of page 46 says, as with other meter to cash functions, the city of Pearland averages 4,002 11 customer accounts per management and support FTE, well below the median of 9,662. There's your problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next up, Adam Carroll.
Thank you, sir. Adam Carroll, 12511 Britt, 77581. I'm here representing the Pearland Police Officers Association. We've reviewed the budget proposal, and I'm going to go outside what my norm would be, and I don't really want to talk about what's in it or what's not in it. I really kind of want to talk about retention. I got back from a police conference two weeks ago, where there were 500 other officers there from all across the state, and the number one thing discussed was retention. Normally, it's recruiting. What are you doing to recruit new people? But this year, it was all about retention, and how do we keep the people that we have? Because there's a mass exodus across the nation. In the last 18 months, we've had 18 officers leave. We've hired 19. Hold on, we had a 19th person, I believe, put in a two weeks notice yesterday. So I guess we're hitting one for one right now. I think we're actually kind of lucky if we're keeping that rate. In fairness, some of these folks have left because they've got 30 plus years of service, so that's a good retirement, they were due. Also, in fairness, there are some people that have probably done something boneheaded and decided to take a retirement or resign. However, there have been a lot that have left to go to other agencies of the private sector. We've had them leave and go to FBI, DEA, DPS. I've heard the argument that, hey, they're moving on to something bigger and better. You know, if you've got five years or less, I might not disagree with that, but if you've got 10 to 15 years of experience and got roots here in this city, and then you go to another agency, I don't know that that's going onward and upward. So there's a big reason of why. Why are people having something, everybody's having problems with retention? I would just say, turn on the TV. When is the news not talking about defunding police, police reform? Oh, they did something that we find out is justified, but we want to revamp their training? All this scrutiny, I would challenge you to find another profession that is more scrutinized than the police profession. I'm going to take two numbers in two professions as an example. An average of 1,050. 1,050 deaths averaged per year. 250,000 deaths averaged per year. The 250,000, medical negligence. 1,050, police fatalities. 1,050, 98 to 99% justified. Justified. I'd have a hard time believing that somebody laying on a table, being operated on, was being a danger to somebody else. I would just go out on a limb and say probably 0% justified. When is the last time you turned on the news and heard about physician reform, or medical reform, or we need better training for any of those individuals? And I hate to pick on this profession, but I didn't make these numbers up. Everywhere you go, the statistics are out there, but they're not talked about. It weighs on officers. I will say this, our community is very supportive of the police, and I appreciate the city, and the council, and the mayor, and the staff for that. I really do. But again, you can't turn on the news without seeing this, and it's always in officers, it's always in their mind. I think our retention rate for all city employees? I think it's, my opinion, I think it's been pretty high the last few years. I don't know why. I can only talk about why I feel like it's this way on the police side, and I think it has to do a lot with the scrutiny of the profession that, quite frankly, isn't justified. So I think we're lucky right now that we've been able to hire a one for one, but I think our luck is going to run out. I really do. It's hitting all other PDs everywhere, and they're scrambling to figure out how to retain people. I think we need to get ahead of the curve before we're in the shape that some of these other agencies are in and can't get out of. That's it. That's, just want you guys to really think about that, and not just for PD, not just for PD, but for all the employees. You've got to retain good people, so please think about that. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. All right, next up, what we're all here for, new business number one. I'll kick it off to staff.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you, everybody, for being here. Thanks for the staff for being here. We're all gathered for Assistant Chief Pat Savage's birthday, and we're going to enjoy this morning together. So this is an important kickoff to our budget presentation, and as Council well knows, this is the culmination in many ways of prior discussions and actions by the council, but we are setting the stage and the boundaries for upcoming FY '23 that starts the fiscal year. So get the PowerPoint up. So all this budget material is available online. Last several years, we've had a hub where we list not only the recommended budget, but also the supporting materials, and as we go along through the process, that'll all be posted up there. So you can find that easily on the webpage, and then this QR code will take you up to Who's doing this? I don't want, no. All right, so the whole budget presentation is geared around shaping the future. We say that as we're not just observers of our future, but we have an opportunity and responsibility to shape that. So we all are committed together with our team and with community for building that community together, which will feature significant areas for public safety. We're supporting our employees and looking long term. So I really think that in a lot of ways, this community is poised for really positive things. A lot of the groundwork that's been laid over the years with infrastructure and investments, we see coming to fruition. Mentioned in the letter later this year, we'll see the McCard Road east-west artery opening up, which will make a big mobility difference. But then also, we've highlighted, we've been able to open up a lot of upgraded and modernized facilities across the board that support our operations, and we're going to be able to leverage those going forward for big things. So just getting into some numbers right away, the big picture on the general fund, revenues and expenditures, you can see there, I have a strong fund balance and projected in this recommendation to finish the year over our 90-day target. And just to note once, last, probably one last time, that is higher than we had. We achieved that earlier than we thought we would, and when council set out that challenge, but we've got about 2.6 over that. But revenues of 109 million in the general fund, expenditures of 110, that's a planned drawdown, it's not a structural imbalance. We have one-time expenses and one-time revenues that offset that, so we're in good shape. So the story this year is really tremendous growth in the assessed valuation. Comes from many areas, and anybody that's been paying attention knows that the real estate market's been very strong, sales, resales have been extraordinary, really across the board. It's important to note that these values are set by the county tax praisers as part of their process as of January 1. So the values at that time were set, and then since then, you know, they've been working theirs, and they gave us preliminary numbers for the total valuation on about May, and then we got the final certified value beginning of August, just a couple of weeks ago. But that really drives this, and the percentage increase you can see, extraordinary. So the city valuation pushing up on 12 and a half billion dollars across the board. So won't go into great detail, but these are the three things that the state sets out for us and mandates as local governments. They do their calculation off of last year's revenue, and they have the no new revenue rate calculation, and then the voter approved rate, that top one. If the city were to exceed that, that would trigger an automatic vote to, by the people to certify it or ratify that. And I don't know how that would work in the real world for timing, but regardless, we're below that. It used to be a revenue cap of 8%, and then a petition for going over that. Now it's 3 and a half percent by their calculation for a new revenue, and we're just below that, and then there would be an automatic rate voter, voter approval. I would like to note that, that no new revenue for us, because of the way the state calculation is, that would actually bring in $7 million less in revenue because of the way they calculate it than FY '22 rate. So again, the headline would be that the city's portion of the tax rate for next year is a 7.3% decrease, so a little more than 10%. That includes what we would do for all of our operations day-to-day for police, fire, a lot of public works, parks, et cetera, et cetera. So it's an important revenue source for us. That voter approved rate that we're below does include the bank rate from the calculation, but again, that strong growth is important for us, and it necessitates us to go above the no new rate that they calculated for us. The ratio of debt and O&amp;M operations has continued to improve. I remember when I started, that was a big concern of the council, that so much of our property tax revenue was going to debt versus day-to-day operations, and that really has moderated and switched over time, over the last eight or nine years. So this table is, I think, useful in a lot of ways. This describes in the blue what we had for '22 from the rates, and then what we gathered from that in actual revenue. And then there's the scenarios of the no new revenue rate, which would again be less revenue ironically, and the column three there is that voter approved rate. And so we're just below that in column two in the green, and that shows the seven cents reduction, and then that would generate, will generate for us about $50 million in property tax revenue for a general fund and the TERS administration. Those are tied together, there's a mathematical formula that go together. There's the rate again. So I want to go into some of the examples of actual property tax bills. Before I do that, we've shown this traditionally, our JS department takes the data from the county and then, you know, does some summaries of that, and the largest number there you'll see obviously is a, is the 10% cap. Majority, 76% of the homestead properties are at that cap. And the other piece I would take away from this is that the homestead properties are significant in our community. About 28,000 properties are affected with that. So that A, they get the 10% cap, and B, with our rate decrease, those would see an absolute dollar changes, and I'll show you that now. So we've taken the same 10 property examples, I think our real world example helps in this case, and we do the math, and as you can see, the city scenario, each one of those has a, albeit slight, a, it's not an increase, it's a small decrease on, in real dollars for each of those examples. The other thing to show from this is that the city is about 25 to 30%, depending on where your property is of a total tax bill, so that's what the city portion is. And the other thing I'd say is that the city, the total tax as a percentage of the taxable value throughout all of these has stayed fairly constant between 2 and 3% of the assessed valuation. So example eight, for every reason, we've, we've shown in a couple of cases, but that shows you one specific case, property value going up 10%. I'm not, the assessed valuation, that's capped, and then with the city rate reduction, that'd be $44 less for next year, and staying at 22%. The other thing, the senior examples with that home, that senior exemptions substantially below everything else, if they're eligible for that and apply for that, that particular example only is paying $900 compared to many multiples of that for the other properties. Other go-to revenue for us in the general fund is sales tax. I had very, very strong year last year. That, that rate has moderated, but we still saw an increase. The last number we just got this week, we shared to you last night, or Thursday night, was about 6% on current, and so that still is showing strong growth. We budgeted, whether you want to call it conservative or not, 3.75 in the next fiscal year, and that's about more than a quarter of our total general fund revenues. So the other headline that we're all living with is inflation, and although headlines last week or so is that that's moderated, it's still high, higher than the recent past for sure. Yeah, the city sees that in many different ways. Our employees see that, we see it on construction projects, but this just quantifies that. You know, it's not new to anybody, but you know, just to put some number on that, you know, that inflation number running about 8% plus or minus in the, in the last Wall Street Journal and so forth stories we've seen. So back to us and in this budget, you know, we are a people organization and very pleased and proud that we did the market study last year. We funded that 100%. The few employees that weren't, weren't able in the last budget to get there, we made a commitment that we'd get them in this year, and that's in this budget for sure. That's about eight positions, I believe they're all on fire. But then looking ahead for everybody else, we have in this budget an effective 5.5% increase in wages. That's a combination of the step increases that are funded, and then move in the market. So the purpose of that is a couple of things. One, it's to recognize, you know, cost of living and expenses for our employees. It's to remain competitive in the market with other public and private agencies, and it's also to keep us from slipping behind that market, so that when we do a next market study in a few years, that we're not having to make those as large leaps to catch up. So that's all an important package, and that's an important budgetary item, but that is funded in here, and we can handle that financially. I'll note too, that uniform police, because their steps are a little bit higher, it's an effective 6 and a half percent for uniform police. Another feature of this budget is that we've added in, for employees that are at the max in police, they have a few, fewer steps in the, that, that plan, they'd be given a 2% increase, a lump sum on their anniversary, so that, you know, some years in the past, they haven't, they realized the full benefits and, and you know, they're in that step plan, there's a purpose to that, but this is a way to recognize that and to add something for, for those folks. And there's a, there's a substantial amount, there's about a third of the employees in the police uniform that are topped out on that. We do have additional certification pay in the enterprise fund, that's important as we compete, and those positions are very tough to find for people who have the right certifications in water and wastewater operators, and so we've got that in here. And then just to note, we don't have it fully fleshed out yet, but just to preview, we are going to be looking and asking council to consider some sort of print to leave program during '23, but we need some more time to vet that out and scope that out. So digging on the general fund as well, still, this particular graph shows you where we're spending our money. Once again, majority in the public safety function, should be no surprise, police and fire and emergency management services, and so about 60% of our budget goes towards that. Next is general government, that includes transfers out, that's becoming a larger part of our budget as we develop these internal service funds with not only fleet, but now IT and facilities, so that'll become a part of the budget picture. And then public works here, but you know, that's also spread out in some other funds. So the rest of the service areas, you can see that we have in there. Sorry. So also want to note, we, we keep this front and center, this is the council strategic priorities there on the left that you developed and articulated in February, and we keep this in mind, every time we're trying to make a decision about, you know, are, when we have choices to make, are we furthering one of these strategic priorities? And then more specifically, the initiatives that change more so that you review year to year, and those are tied to those priorities, and we're trying to advance those always. So I want to go through just some of those at a high level. In the trusted government, we do have the permitting software that you've heard about. We've got that funded from ARPA grant as an eligible expense, and, and then we're also keeping up on the technology services and the people that support that. We are very technology dependent as most any organization these days, and so we've got to have people around that can support that function. I think we're at a good point with that, and this will keep us in the right mind there. On the strong economy, we also have a upgrade to the Unified Development Code, that's a large, multi-year undertaking to go through that and try to make that document more accessible to the, anybody that's using that. We also, and we'll spend quite a bit of time talking about that, are dedicated to increased funding for the drainage in this community, so that takes a couple of different flavors. One's the, the maintenance, and council made the commitment with the resolution earlier this year, that that was their top priority coming up here, right after funding those market positions. And so that's going to be, you'll see that emphasized throughout. And then permitting software, moving to an existing piece of software, but that transition will take several hundred thousand dollars to have the expertise to bring us along there into the city works package. And then more investments in safe community, we've got a large amount there, obviously, in police and fire. We've got three new positions, the top priority from Command there was telecommunication operators, so we have two of the four that they'd requested there, then one additional officer. So that just keeps us at least moving a little bit more with additional positions. And then on the fireside, we've got four new firefighter positions, and that's important for several reasons. That rounds out the shifts so that they're balanced, and we don't have a imbalance from one shift from the other two, and, but then the other, adding a position to this, another slot to each of those, that's going to assist us with reducing mandatory overtime, that's really not good for anybody, firefighter, you know, sustainability, if you will, trying to keep them, you know, healthy always, obviously. But then that's also going to be able to give them a little bit of time so that we can invest more in their training and proactive and community outreach work, instead of being quite as reactionary. So that, just that, adding that position and giving that one position reach slot will help, help towards that. And then the other big thing in this budget is the fire vehicles, we've gotten behind there, and so we're using some of that ARPA money, federal funds for fire vehicles, and then lift assists for the high water rescue vehicles, so that when they are deployed, that they can be used to more easily and safely get people up and, and out of the situation. And infrastructure, one of our favorite words here, we're creating that drainage maintenance fund, so it moves money that was with streets into a separate identifiable fund that will be maintained year to year, and then we're adding people to that significantly. So that's going to help with our maintenance operations. You heard at the CIP workshop, Dante Prescott and the team gave you a very good overview of that, and I think really brought that to light, and so we've got a major improvements in that drainage work in this budget. We've got a project manager position, another very tough position to fill, very competitive, but that is funded by the projects themselves. And then we're building this surface water treatment plant, we need to have people there to operate that, and so that's a ramp up. You can't just turn on the lights one day and then start to pump water. We've got to have people there that know the system there, are comfortable with that. We have to go through the licensing and the shakedown, and so the ramp up towards that is in this budget as well. And that includes a water compliance, quality compliance team that you'll see. So we're in good shape, we just have some smaller things here, training and certification, et cetera, that keeps us going and keeps our people sharp and modern techniques and what have you. And then we have a couple of little things here, recreation, improving the process for how we contract for instructors, and then converting a part-time office assistant to full-time to try to keep up with the rentals and so forth there. full-time to try to keep up with the rentals and so forth there. It's not major budget priorities. With that, I'll turn over to Eric and take you through several more slides.
Thank you very much, City Manager Pearson. Onto everyone's favorite portion, the detailed financial hydraulics. The major changes from today, we try and avoid any sort of typos. Unfortunately, one got through. I want to be very clear, though, that it's in the enterprise fund, and what it did is it was a typo that made revenues appear about $8 million higher than they actually were. This isn't an issue in New World, this isn't an issue in the rate model. The sheets we put together that you have in your binder are literally the last thing we do, and it was literally one of those finger typos. So it doesn't affect the math at all. We've handed council an updated sheet that has the correct numbers, and it was in that proposal, it was in the FY '22 adopted revenue is where you see the change. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to walk through that in more detail when we get to the enterprise fund. But it doesn't change anything in FY '23. So always good to remember, budget is an extremely important document for every city. It's a policy document, it's our financial plan, it's an operations guide, and it's a communications device. The city manager showed the city council's strategic priorities and initiatives, and that's something that if you had walked by my office anytime in the last couple of months, you probably saw that up on my monitor. It is sort of the North Star for the budget office when we think about which supplementals are we recommending for funding, which items are going to go in the budget, and which order, the priority levels. It is, it is a document that is key for us and very helpful when council puts their time in on usually another Saturday in the spring to give us those sort of priorities. It really guides this budget, and I, every year, we get a little bit better at showing how it guides the budget. The city manager went over some of these highlights, but it's always good to show them in a list here along with the costs. So you see in IT, we're adding the technology support specialists. In community development, supporting our strong economy, we have the Unified Development Code update. This is one of the items that we are paying for using a drawdown on the general fund reserves. We have some extra money there, and this is a good one-time use of that money. We are adding four firefighting positions, as well as converting a fire office assistant part-time to a full-time position in the fire department. We are authorizing $200,000 for police equipment purchases. Again, this is part of the general fund's one-time appropriation, this is a good one-time use, good one-time purchase. We're adding a police officer with vehicle, so police officer to bring them on, get their equipment, get their vehicles, about $185,000. After that, their regular cost is lower than that. I don't want anyone thinking a police officer who starts with the city walks home with $185,000. Although that would be nice, I'm sure. Two telecommunications operators, when you call up 911, these are the people who pick up the phone. Where this budget contains an addition of two for a cost of $151,000, so lots of investments in safe, safe community this year. For sustainable infrastructure, you see that we've added the drainage crew. This is listed under the general fund because it's a general fund transfer to the drainage fund that pays for these staff. So that's the $662,000 that council authorized earlier this year and directed staff to dedicate to drainage, that is in the budget as directed. As well as a project manager, there is $140,000 cost, but at the end of the day, they charge to specific projects, so it nets out to zero. And then finally, for welcoming community, we have a program, contract instructor pay package for $32,000. And what this does is really streamline the way we pay our contractors, it makes the customer process easier, and it makes it easier on staff to make sure all the money is working together and we can talk, sorry, the money is flowing as it should be without extra steps for customers and contractors and things like that. And then finally, we are converting a part-time office assistant to a full-time office assistant in the Parks and Recreation Department to help out with growing demand. On the staffing side, we are looking at, you see those four firefighters, that conversion in fire is conversion of two part-time office assistants to one full-time, so it's net zero. You have the one police officer, you have the two telecommunications operators, you have the one project manager in engineering and public works, and then you have the one part-time office assistant to full-time, which is half an FTE. So in the general fund, we're requesting to add eight and a half FTEs for a cost of $960,000. And again, these include startup costs such as vehicles and things like that. We like to highlight what's not in the budget. There's always things that don't quite make the list, there's never enough money to go around. This year, an additional two and a half, $6 million, sorry, additional $2.6 million is what the city engineer estimates would be required to keep our streets and sidewalk, sidewalks at the current condition level. There were 159 vehicles and equipment that are eligible for replacement in the general fund that we are not funding for replacement this year. There is, there was $4.3 million in supplemental request for staffing within the general fund. 1.8 million of this was in public safety, 860,000 in engineering and public works, 712,000 in Parks and Recreation, and 130K in the internal service departments. And then there were $3.3 million in non-personnel supplemental requests, such as items like the facility condition assessment, recommended repairs. And I should add that the items that were funded, and as well as the items that were not funded, are listed in the appendix section of Budget Book One. Let's move on to the general fund. Revenues, always really good to look at the comparison between this year and last year, it helps tell that story. So you see that property tax revenue is going up, City Manager Pearson talked about, you know, the tremendous growth in the tax base. Again, I want to reiterate that the tax rate itself is going down several cents. Sales and use tax have seen tremendous growth over the last couple of years, we envision that tapering off, so we've estimated 3 and 3/4% growth for FY '23 over what we think we'll get in FY '22. And that's something, of course, we'll keep an eye on going through the year, just in case the economy changes or anything like that. Charges for service, you see modest growth, as well as modest growth in franchise fees as electricity prices and natural gas prices have increased. You see licenses and permits, we expect to come in similarly. Miscellaneous revenue, we expect to come in a little bit higher. And then transfers in are decreasing a little bit, because last year, we moved more money from the ARPA fund into the general fund under what we call forced account labor transfers. This year, we're doing a little bit less of that, and we're spending out of the ARPA fund directly. So that's more of an optics difference, it's just coming out of a different pot. Here we have our proposed property tax rates. Property tax is broken up into two components, what we call the O and M rate for operations and maintenance. This is sort of your money that runs the city on a daily basis, and then your debt rate. This is the money that pays back the loans for any sort of large capital project that is, anything that is not water and sewer related in our city. So you can see here that in FY '20, the overall rate was 74 cents. For FY '23, the proposed rate is 62.9 cents. Over the, from FY '20 to FY '23, there has been an 11.2% decrease over those four years. And that represents a lot of diligent work by staff, it represents growth in the city and represents direction by council. Looking at the proposed property tax revenue, so you take that rate and you times it by our, you know, taxable values, and you come up with the FY '22 adjusted, we're moving from 30 million to 36.6 million. And then totals, in the debt service side, we're moving from 38 million to 44 million. Overall, property tax revenue will increase from 68.2 million to 80.9 million. I do want to comment really quickly on this collections rate of 104.39, because it's very specific and it's a little odd. This is calculated by the, under state law, the counties calculate it for us, it is not something staff calculate, they tell us what our collections rate is. And it's a pretty complicated formula that keeps things like in mind of, okay, you made money from taxes that were due a couple of years ago that you just got back this year, so your numerator can end up being bigger than your denominator, and it's just kind of odd map, but it is what it is. I know, those government finance people. Looking at a general property tax bill comparison, so we like to try and make this real, what does this tax rate mean for homeowners in Pearland? And the city of Pearland, when people pay their property taxes, is only one item, only one entity that you pay your property taxes to. So for this home, you know, they're in the Pearland School District, so they pay property taxes to Pearland School District, they pay them to the city, Brazoria County, the drainage district, and the Roden Bridge Fund as well. You can see that last year's rate of 70 cents, they paid $2,144. And then over here, that has changed to $2,114, so a decrease of about $30, even though their valuation increased from 313,000 to 357,000. There's a lot of caveats here on the right side, it's important we have these, but I'll save everyone having to read through them, there's lots of exemptions at play and things like that. Always good to talk about what does one cent worth of property taxes mean? So a one cent, one cent, this amount changes every year depending on our tax base. And so this year, one cent or a penny is 1.6 million dollars. So if council were to increase or decrease the property tax rate, you're looking at a 1.6 million dollar swing if you change it by one cent. What this means to a homestead homeowner's property, using the average homestead tax value of almost $300,000, would mean that the homeowner would save about $29 a year per penny, or about $2.45 per month. And then you can see we ran the calculations for 2 and 3 cents as well, just so everyone had them. There are three main revenue streams in the general fund, they make up 80% of all revenues, your sales taxes, property taxes, and charges for service. Pearland is pretty unique in that we have a very successful TERS, and that is most of those charges for service, it's about a little over $13 million this year. You might ask, why is charges for service decreasing this year? It's due to a one-time boost in ambulance revenue from a state program that occurred in FY '22, where normally we receive about $450,000, uh-oh, I think I might have just frozen up, $450,000. And that year, we received close to 2 million, that is budgeted back at $450,000.
Are we going to have to add one more computer to the budget now?
I don't know if we can afford a new computer for me now, just kidding. Let me see what's going on. Yeah, this shouldn't be a problem. And we're back. Sorry about that. So again, that charges for service is a decrease, mostly just because we had sort of a one-time jump in revenue in FY '22. Moving on to general fund expenditures, comparing FY '22 to '23, you can see that the investments have been made in public safety, they're reflected in this line. You can see public works has gone up a little bit, general government's gone down, I'll explain that in a second. Parks and Recreation is an increase, community service is an increase, transfers out remain essentially the same. So you're probably wondering how on earth did general government go from 14.2 million to 9.3? Well, what happened is we've added two new internal service funds. I'll explain these funds in more detail when we get to the internal service fund section. But essentially, the IT fund and the facility fund allow us to allocate cost to where they're actually occurring. So for example, last year, IT just lived in this general government category as a department. So if IT cost a million dollars, that's where that million dollars came out of. Now, if IT cost a million dollars and police is 200,000 of that, that 200,000 shows up over in public safety, and then if public works is the rest of it, it shows up in public works. So we're dispersing those IT costs and facility costs where we can to these different expense categories, so that it provides more transparency on what the actual cost of delivering these services is. So that's why general government decreased primarily, is it's mostly just moving costs to other areas with better accounting. Transfers out, when we, last time we were here talking about budget, we talked about how streets and infrastructure had been being classified as a transfer out of the general fund, instead of being classified as a public works transfer. We fixed that in our system now, so when we talk about what is being transferred out to the infrastructure reinvestment fund, which is your streets and sidewalk money, that is now reflected in public works. Looking at proposed budget expenses by category, you see here that salaries and wages make up the majority of the general fund expenditures. This is in large part due to the fact that we spend the majority of the general fund on public safety, police and fire, those are very people intense services. And so you would expect salaries and wages would also be a fairly high portion of your budget. This is very, very similar to how other organizations look as well. So the general fund, at the end of the day, we are doing a one-time small drawdown. We are well above our 90-day policy, we're using this to fund some items now, rather than doing a budget amendment one in the fall to get these items funded, they're in the proposed budget to be funded now. You can see that we think we will end FY '22 with about 104 days in reserve, and then the proposed budget would end FY '23 with 99 days in reserve. This exceeds the policy minimum of 90 days by nine days. We maintain all of our core services, our excellent Moody's rating and Fitch rate, AA credit rating have been confirmed as staple and reaffirmed recently, and we are structurally balanced, meaning that even though there's a net negative here, it is one-time expenditures. And if we don't do those one-time expenditures, the recurring revenues are still larger than our recurring costs. Long-term, I always like to zoom out and show where has the city been putting its money in sort of these large categories? So if we go back to FY '18, you can see that the story really is about public safety. So in FY '18, about $42 million or 54% of the general fund was being spent on public safety. Today, as the city's grown, $65.1 million is going to public safety, or about 59% of the general fund budget. We also like to show staffing trends over time. You can see that while they have increased, the largest block of staff is in this dark blue on the bottom here that is public safety, that is where we've been regularly adding people. And I'm happy to provide more detail on this as requested, but you can see here that as the city continues to grow, so has staff, as we keep up with that growth. So that concludes my short presentation on the general fund. As we get through each section, I'll pause for council questions and feedback and direction. Any sort of information requests are welcome, and then to make changes to the proposed budget, I do ask for consensus. So City Manager Pearson will help make sure that everything's clear with everyone in what we're doing there. So with that, I'll hand it back to you.
And again, Mayor Protem, just to be clear, it is important if we can capture any questions or observations, as a short turnaround time next week to the next session number two, which we have, we like to have those back to you. So anything we get tonight is very helpful, thank you.
Thank you, staff. I guess for this, so we've got these placeholders for questions, so if we can try to stick with general fund now, we'll get into the other funds here in a little bit. And I guess if we can start going down the line, make sure everybody has a chance, I'll start down here with Kozak.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. In this, the 2.6 million on the sidewalk and streets, I understand we need to take care of the folks here, but also I look at from a taxpayer standpoint, dodging that, I feel that we need to try and get that, if we can't get the full amount, get something to keep up and maintain that over the years, because through the years, our streets, I know several of us up here, I know communities within the city, we do have street issues, and some of them are a lot bigger than 2.6 million. So in that regards, I do have a little angst over knocking that out.
Appreciate that, and share your angst, mild angst. I'd say two caveats is when we get... I'd say two caveats is when we get, when we have our mid-year allocations after we close the books, that's the very first place we look to to make additional investments during the year. So we'll have that opportunity more likely than we have in the past in '23 to add some money. The other thing I'd say is that you've seen in those CIP workshop updates, we've had great success on the sidewalk side with good contracting and management over there. So we have made good strides there. But you're right, we could use more there. If we have one-time sources, et cetera, that's where we go to as well.
All right, thank you. And then Chief Taylor, in regards on the four FTEs in the Fire Department, it puts us just slightly over what it stated that we need. Can you kind of go in a little detail on what that is and why?
Excuse me, yes. Currently, our minimum daily staffing for our equipment is 42 personnel. This will put us up to 45 per shift with the challenges we've had with overtime and mandatory overtime. It's hit, it's happened across the country, but it's putting us in pretty tough situations as far as returning our personnel for mandatory overtime. Optimum ratio hiring is 1.2 to 1.3 to 1 for each position needed. We've long been hiring at 1 to 1. And so what that does is that doesn't account for any city benefits, vacation, sick leave, holiday, any of those things that we have, not to mention injuries on duty, on-the-job injuries, things of that nature. So we allow up to five personnel off per shift to utilize those benefits, which we have to do to be able to allow them to use those. And what we're finding is currently we have 42, 43 per shift. And our minimum staffing is 42. So as soon as we let off our five for vacation and things of that nature, we're already in the hole and already sharing overtime. So we're trying to get that ratio up to where we need it to be. This is a wonderful first step to get us in that direction where we need to go. It's too big of a jump to do it all in one year, so it'll be a long process.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Campcar?
Mayor Protem question. Is this, we don't want to come back to any general fund items after this go on the horn?
I'd like to hit on all we can, but if there's something that comes up and we need to have it in wrap-up comments.
And just so I understand the format, do we want to have more open discussion later? Or do I need to get all my bitches out right now?
On the general fund, let's go at it. Yeah.
All right, so you don't let me, you don't let me freewheel here.
On the general fund?
All right, I just want to make sure. All right, good. No, I mean, it's only, you know, almost a hundred million dollars budget. So I guess we better just cozy up a little bit. Can we go to the slide that had the three rates? There was like a blue, a red, and I think it was like a black. And it had the different stuff on it. I'm sorry, there's so many different decks going on there. I wish I could give you a cleaner reference than that. No, it's got, it's the one that actually has the numbers on it. It's the one that looks like it was in the packet. It has the no new rate next to the voter-approved rate, next to the...
Just gotta find it. We got it.
Projected rate.
This one?
Yeah. So can we just be educated on this one more time? Like where are we today?
So you're today in the blue on the far left, FY '22.
Let me make sure I'm getting this. So where are we today? What is the no new rate? And what is the voter-approved rate where they have to go to the voters?
Today is blue. No new revenue rate is column one. Voter-approved is three.
We're just slightly above that threshold.
We're just slightly below three.
And that, what is that number again?
Which number, the rate or the dollars?
We're at .701 is today's rate, right?
Yep.
And the no new rate is .54.
Yep.
So we're like 16 cents off. And the proposed rate is more or less, it's not quite a dime. It's like eight cents above. So the eight cents above is essentially discretionary spending.
No.
So what would we call that?
The dollar amounts are important and relate to that. So the no new revenue rate brings in $35 million. They're bringing $7 million less than we took in the current year. So it's just a function of the calculation because the no new revenue rate is total revenue, the way they do it. And so that means debt and general fund. But then you can only take the revenue with this rate from the general O and M side. So it's the state formula. But the no new revenue rate is not a real number for us this year because it would mean $7 million less revenue to the general fund operations.
We could, but we could, in the sake, if we wanted to do the no new revenue rate, we could figure that out.
I'm not trying to be sarcastic, but that means we would close down much of our operations, yes. You could, but...
Just, I'm very aware that the budget is well over, it's almost $110 million. And less than two years ago, it was like 89 million. So that's a significant growth in what we're doing. And I just want to get out here before I get everything going and getting into more specific line items. We're talking about a budget that is increasing $7 million year-over-year. And I don't know that the residents can stomach that. I don't know that I can stomach it. And so I just want to make sure that we're very clearly discussing the budget that we're proposing at 109 is this green proposed tax rate, which is only like half a cent under the voter-approved rate. There's a lot of dollars here that I think we have to be really cognizant of what we're doing and be good stewards of. So I just want to make sure we're at .70 today. The no new rate is 54 cents. And right now, we are about a dime off of that no new rate today. I'm just wanting to see the math. Is my math far off, Eric?
The no new revenue rate is a state calculation of what it would take to bring in the same amount of revenue you brought in last year. But the way it is in your binder pocket, if anyone wants to take a look at how those calculations are made, like the city manager said, we would have to find about $7 million in potential cuts to go to the no new revenue rate, but that is an option.
And I mean, just for the recitation of the facts, what was the amount of money that we brought in last year? I don't have that data. I'm assuming you have it more clearly than I do.
It's right there for general fund or?
Just overall, like the entirety of the budget.
Yeah, 106 million plus for my S.
I just want to...
Total revenue at the end of FY '22 is estimated at 105 million. Total revenue for FY '23 proposed is 109.4. So it's about a $4.5 million increase.
Okay. I'm not pro-cutting, to be honest with you, but I would just tell you this. Inflation is at 8.5%. We're talking about the need to work on wages and all those things. But mom and dad and businesses are under an immense amount of stress. I think we all know that. So I just want to lay out where we are at the very top line to put the contour out there. Go from there. So can we go look at some of the departments and just what the departmental spending increases were? Do you have that data? I've got it in your revenue spreadsheet, but I don't want to catch you out.
I don't, that's not really part of the presentation today, but can we pull it up?
Yeah, which side?
I'll send you the file off of yours that I edited.
I can pull it up in the budget book.
No, I'm talking at the very granular level. Here, I'll send that to you and Eric, so we're working for the same sheet of notes.
You've got a binder page. Just give it to us. We can throw that up there.
Well, I had it from the Excel data. You guys is a little too grossed up.
Just go to the summary of the general fund.
In Department 105, which is the city manager's budget, last year on the Excel on the expenses was 1.47 million. It's now 1.7. It's a 16.22% increase. And we just get some clarity on where that is coming from. Do you need the GL account? Eric, would that help you?
No, not at this point. So you're looking at the city manager's office.
Department 105, yeah. GL number .5000.010.
So they're increasing from 1.27 million to 1.38 million?
The file that was presented on the Excel that you guys generated on the website, just pull the expenses and then by department.
There's, so when you are playing with those Excel files, there is a lot of ways with the transfers to double count things.
Just, I've sent you the file. I mean, we can discuss it. You want to talk about the increase?
I appreciate that, but the budget book is accurate. I can guarantee that. I can't guarantee, the Excel files are accurate per New World. But if people are rolling them up, I don't know how they're rolled up.
I just want to, for the sake of the discussion, this is all on the city's website. And this is a file pulled directly there. So I don't want there to be any, Alex is off to the...
It's on the website, yes.
Well, anyways, can you talk about the increase? Because we're acknowledging that there's an increase there.
So the city manager's office budget goes from 1.3 million to 1.4. So that's the amount.
Okay. I just want to reference for the record, the GL number is .5000.010. That's a $106,000 increase. And I'd like to understand, where are we? Are we adding another person? Are we not? Are we thinking about adding?
No, we went through all the adds and there's no adds in that office.
In the follow-up memo, I can look specifically into that account and let you know exactly what that is.
That would work for me.
Okay.
I guess, if I can just apply, if you go to Book 2, the general fund, page four, it will, it'll take you through that 1.27 to the 1.3. So you can see it category by category. And that's something that we can reference in a budget book. That'll give you a lot more granularity.
And I agree, it's just the Excel is easier for me, but I don't dispute that there's not a book that doesn't say that. The discussions in community development in Section 410 is an increase of about 29% year-over-year, 3.2 million from 2.5. Of the 380 for the UDC update, I get it. It's been discussed here. But I'd like to just have more understanding of kind of where we're moving towards on that. We had a $176,000 increase or 74% on Budget Number 410, 415.3300.100.
Sorry, what were the, what was that string?
It says it's business permits and occupancy permit is what the account description is, but I don't have more insight on that. And then I've got one below it for 74,000 increase. So roughly a quarter million dollars, a little under a quarter million dollars under budget item 3, .3300.010. And that's also listed as business permits, building permit.
So you're asking, why did we increase revenue there?
It's just from the '22 budget, now this is only expenses. From the '22 budget to the proposed budget is a quarter million increase there. It's just labeled permitting.
I believe those are revenue accounts, councilman.
Oh, they're expenses. All right, you're right.
That's okay.
The 380 increase is on the UDC item. There's three items, sorry, on 55,000, 50 and 50 that are salary and employees. And I'm just curious, are we adding more staff?
We're adding no staff in community.
There's no staff adds. We went through the...
We have increased our contract inspectors based on perceived growth this year and what expenses have been historically. But it's in line with what we, our end-of-years typically have been.
And then our communications budget, we're up 29, almost 28% departmentally, from 724 to 926. I'd just like some insight on that.
They're increasing from 752,000 to 926. Is there a specific?
That's just departmentally across. And so I'm just wondering, is it one particular item? Or is it, I mean, we've got a $63,000 employee, it looks like.
It's gonna take me a sec to pull up their, to find their department in this Book 2 real quick. So we, I don't believe we are adding any staff in that area. Just looking at the regular employee salaries, it looks like we're going to end FY '22 at about $408,000 per the amended budget. And that will increase to 433,000, which would not be enough for employees. So that's just going to be your general raises.
Start getting into the larger ones here in police. In employees, which is Section 200, the top-line increase on .500.010, it looks like it's 753,000. Let's just call 754, which is about an 8% increase year-over-year. We're adding one personnel from what I guess is being proffered as a patrol. Can we just quantify, I guess, is the rest of that? I want to say the police officer that we listed was 185 on the highlights. And so the 185 minus the 750, let's call it, there's 600,000. Is that wages going up in that category, .5000?
So this display is a good one for getting to medium level. That shows by the divisions. Obviously, patrol is largest by far of the 38, 7.6 million we spend on police. And the new person would be in the 18.9, as well as the six and a half for uniformed would be predominantly in there. And then the additional two response operators would be in the communications. That's what, it goes from 24 to 29.
So the, I guess, Eric, the extra 500,000 that's in category .500.010, which is listed as salaries and wages and regular employee, that 8%, is that raises?
Six and a half percent raises are what was allocated. And so once you net out all the new additions, that's what it would be.
I want to just put that out there for the record. And I like to at least, as we're doing the follow-up memos, have a real clear recitation on that particular category. What is new person and what is quote-unquote new money to police and operations there? The way that this item, you know, has, there's a lot of salary and wages. There's a category for that. Some going in, some going out. And so it's just, it's a very dense file, but I'd like to have a clear understanding of that number. The capital outlay that was allocated, it's item .5600.080. It's a $200,000 account description of capital outlay special equipment. I have asked for this memo, have not received yet. And so I'm going to call it to the mat. I'd like to see what is going into that $200,000.
That memo, we will get out on Monday. I'm sorry, that is not in your binder book. That is money that is going to go towards things like updated shields and equipment.
Just have Johnny talk about that now.
Chief, can you talk about that, that $200,000?
Absolutely. So actually prepared, you know, it's a pretty sensitive subject with devaluing everything. So I kind of prepared a little statement. So if it sounds like I'm reading, I am, because I don't want to miss any points. And then I... Then I can answer any questions after that, obviously. So as, as we enter the, the new school year, Uvalde is still fresh on our minds. After the tragic, tragic event, it is our duty to take a hard and close look at our readiness, not just for our schools, but other targets like hospitals, shopping areas, city facilities, and any public events. Although not all the information is available, what we have seen from those events in Uvalde was a failure of leadership, tactics, and unfortunately accountability. The public expects us to handle these incidents with precision and without delay. Looking at our readiness, we already knew we had all our officers trained in alert, which is our rapid response. We also have trained an integrated response with some of our firefighters, and although COVID did put us behind in some of those areas. We have several officers who are instructors in alert, and we team them up with some of our best tactical officers and had them evaluate what we need to move forward towards this training and equipment. Looking ahead, we have very aggressive training schedules. Starting in October, all officers will be trained in SWORD, which is an acronym for Solo Officer Rapid Deployment, which is in addition to the alert training. Also, before the end of the year, we're looking to schedule a scenario-based training with our fire service. Looking at equipment, our subject matter experts came up with a plan to purchase breaching tools, shotguns designed for breaching and shields. This equipment will be in supervisors' vehicles, staged at firehouses, and we will have some shields on fire apparatus. This is a completely different response than SWAT. Some people get SWAT compared with this rapid response. SWAT is geared towards barricaded suspects, hostage situations where there's no one actively being harmed and action negotiations are underway. It takes SWAT about 30 to 45 minutes to arrive on a scene. This is not what we're talking about. Although no plan's perfect, I do believe this will put us in a better position than we were yesterday. So when we look at these situations, it's, it's just incumbent upon us to look at every angle. Although that situation looks like it was more, like I said, leadership, we still had to look deep into our, what we were doing in our procedures to make sure we can improve. If we don't improve upon it, then we're failing everybody.
And I, I just want to say, chief, this is kind of born about, after the Uvalde thing, I think all of us were touched. And I realize that we can only do so many things. I think we have to think bigger than ourselves, but we have to apply ourselves locally. I want to give credit to the staff, city manager, assistant city manager, Johnny Spires, Chief Savage. They met with me. We had a hard discussion around this. And I think that there's some realization that we have to do the training. We have to have the tools. At the end of the day, I agree with you. There is a lot of a leadership component in that instance. But when I, when we dug into who's getting trained and what they're doing, our, our people are way above the state standard. But I want to say it was five or six times. And, and I was very impressed with that. But we asked a lot of hard questions. Assistant Chief Savage has put together the memo that I hear is going to be here on Monday. And this capital outlay is coming there. I would tell you, I don't want there to be a situation where it's, we don't have the tools. And so I, I'm very sensitive. I know we're having discussions that are very critical around the budget and what we spend money on. There's not a, a number high enough that we would say, don't spend it for our kids or for our families or the people who live here. And so that is something that I'm very sensitive to, and I, I want to make sure that we're, we're taking care of that. So I appreciate the chief working on that issue. And, and that will be an item that we will, we'll keep an eye on. Especially through the rest of this month, month and a half. So. I'd like to touch a couple more things on item 200 really quickly. Eric, the, the, I'm going to try to tee this up for you, .5900, .020, and then .5400, .160. We're about 200% up on these categories from 27,000 to about 102 on transfers out in maintenance on one item. And then we've got professional contract services miscellaneous for .5400, .160. And that's up 66%. And I'm just trying to get some line of sight on where those increases are.
Which, can you give me the departments you saw this in?
This is all police.
All police?
Yeah. So .5900, .020, and then .5400, .160.
Councilmember Kamkar, I can answer the transfer out repair and maintenance question. This is for our internal fleet services department. Every year we recalculate that transfer based off the departments that use the most fleet maintenance services. So last year, if you look at fire operations, they made up a majority of the transfer for fleet maintenance. And this year, the police patrol vehicles have required the most maintenance. So that calculation changes every year and then is assigned to the department that uses it.
Let me, let me just ask a question because this is kind of one of those things where we are working towards these funds. That we essentially say, this group is doing this much work this year on maintenance, and then they will allocate out, be charged to that department. That, roughly speaking.
So roughly the way we look at it is, okay, last year, police and fire, or sorry, police were 60% of costs. So this year, we expect them to be about 60% of costs. So we're going to budget 60% of the cost there.
Okay. I think that that's helpful. It's just, we've got a lot of these transfers in and out, and I want to go there. And then I'd like to go to department 205, budget 205, 260.5000.01. That's salaries and wages, chief. First of all, thank you for being here today. I'm very glad that you're here. We have 1.97 million change from the previous year to this year. It's about 25% up. I know that we're, we're putting the step in or we're, we're adding dollars here. But we've also got more personnel at about 436. And so I just want to make sure, have that expressed that there's a 1.5 million, roughly speaking, rough math, going as part of the increases.
Let me follow it up in a memo so I can get you the exact numbers. And we'll break out, here are the new costs and here is what's going to, to, to raises and, and personnel cost increases.
Chief, I want to go then to .5145.025. It's wearing apparel, PPE. It's up 195. It's 234 year over year. Can you just talk a little bit about what we're buying or what, what additional stuff we need to get?
A lot of that cost goes to our, our personal protective equipment, our PPE that our firefighters wear out in the field. We, we carry two sets of bunker gear for cancer prevention purposes so that we always have a clean set. We have the other ones that are soiled, sent off to have the carcinogens removed or, or removed in our, our extractors. With that, we had a little windfall. We had a lot of dates on those. Those are, they have a 10-year lifespan on them. Our bunker gear does, our PPE. So it was just to smooth that out to get, get that where we need it to be. So moving along in the future, we're smoothing that out. We're buying a moderate amount each year instead of having a windfall of, of a huge cost. So that's what we were trying to do is get over that hump so we could smooth that out into the future.
Awesome. Okay. And then in category 5, .5430, .040, it's professional development inserts. Our budget last year was 32,000, just a hair over. And now we're at 237, increase of 205 or 640%. Can you just talk about what we're, we're buying with that?
Yeah. That's our complete training program. Now, there's an inordinate amount of training that we're, we're putting back into place with our ISO one rating. Instead of each firefighter hitting the state standard of 120 hours of training per year, it's now 240 hours of training per year. It's expected with ISO training. That had been, the ability to, to get out and train over the last two and a half years due to COVID has really restricted that. This is to get us back up to where we need to be to, to achieve needed certifications and to maintain certifications that we already have in place. Also with training, there are some maintenance and, and other items that we have that go along with our training field, our, our burn tower that we have to maintain that and keep that fueled so that we continue to train and process there.
And so for those dollars, are those staying here in Pearland? Or are we sending somebody, somebody, somewhere else for that, those funds?
Majority of that, we're staying in Pearland. There are some classes that have to be, they have to be sent out for those. They're just not offered here. So whether we send them around the state or outside the state, there are opportunities that we do send for outside training for professional development that we need to have.
Okay. And then we have a couple more charges, 5600 and 5300, .080, and their capital special outlay equipment. It's 119,000, $119,000 increase. It's 59% year over year budget-wise. Can you speak to that?
Pull that one up. Rachel, do you have that one handy?
I apologize. Can you repeat that account number?
Yes, ma'am. Give me just a second. Ready?
Yes. That is the second year of their radio equipment repair. We approved year one during one of the budget amendments. And so that'll be the second year. We're replacing all their radios in two chunks.
Okay. I, that be, is that like a one-time item or is that going to be a recurring item?
It's a two-time item. So the first part is in the amended budget for 2022, and the second part will be in 2023. And then going forward, we'll look at a more smoother replacement cycle so that we don't have to do it in these big chunks.
My, my just, my fear, and I'm just going to say it, is that once things get in the budget, they never come out. And I appreciate that it's a one-time item. But I have a funny feeling this isn't going to go out. But I at least want to, we called it to the mat. It's fair. It's good. I just want to get it out there.
That's, that's, that's fair. And on those radios, what we have is going obsolete. They need to be replaced. That's usually around an eight to, to 10-year process when they need to be replaced. And so we're finding some things that weren't replaced on a regular basis that we're trying to get those, those things in place in the future so that we don't have these big asks. We can, we can smooth that out over the years. So we're working on several areas to get, get us to that point.
I was briefed on some of those items that were not taken care of timely. And I understand that. And I appreciate that you guys are getting on top of it. And I understand that. And it sounds like this is one of those items.
Thank you.
I'd like to go to 300, and then I will stop, Mayor Protem. Category 300, we've had, this is Public Works. I've had several larger ones. I just want to make sure that these are out there. Item 5000, .010, we had $308,000 increase in salaries and wages. I just want to make sure what are we buying for that extra 300,000?
Councilmember Kamkar. 300, 100? Engineering administration.
300 dash 345, .5000.010.
That is our capital projects division. So that would be the project manager that will be reimbursed for.
We're going to get reimbursed? Are we reimbursing that fund, the water, water and waste, whatever?
No, the capital project funds pay a transfer to the general fund for the project managers.
In this case, it's an expense. So are we, is the general fund kicking in that way? Or is it, is that, that fund kicking back to us?
It's reflected as an expense and then as a revenue back to the general fund, just not in the expense accounts. So you'll see the full cost, but then we'll get an increased revenue transfer back.
So in theory, it zeros out.
Correct. Additionally, our engineering and administration division was absorbed by Public Works Administration. And so there was some redistribution of staff. So that also accounts for some of the increases.
I've got two more that I'm going to let this go. .5110, .110, parts supplies miscellaneous. It's $240,000 increase year over year, 60,000. Sorry, 60% budget increase. Can we talk about that? It's under traffic, is I guess is a subcategory.
I think Upton will be willing to speak on that.
Materials to maintain our traffic signals. We've been programming that over time. That'd be additional cabinets to rebuild those signals. Span wire, replace those that are, span wire set up along Broadway or in other areas within the city. So that is based on our program we've been developing over the past couple of years.
Is that a one-time item or is that a recurring item?
Traffic signals, we have 110 now.
I'm talking about on the cabinets and the, are you talking about cabinets associated with the new signals that are going?
Yes. No, it's cabinets associated with all 110 signals. So it's, we have a plan to be able to try and rehab five to seven a year in-house. Listen, also taking a look at a rehab program that is out that contractors will help us with as well. This is our program to be able to start doing those items, rebuilding our traffic signals, our heads, head poles, et cetera, all the way through. And then accounting for those cost increases that we're seeing through the supply chains.
One more item, .5400, .160, professional and contractual service miscellaneous. $140,000 year over year from 102 to 242, 137% up. Can we just say what that's going to?
Would you mind presenting the whole account, please?
Yeah, yeah, sure. I apologize. 100 dash 300 dash 305, .5400, .160. Professional contractual service miscellaneous.
Okay. So that one specifically, if that's, we're still dealing with traffic regards to that. We do have a contract to help us with span wire specifically because that's not a specialty we own in-house.
Is that going to drop off in next year's budget?
What's that?
Is that going to drop off in next year's budget? Or is that just going to sit there?
We'll do the work, but then it'll probably be, because we only do about two to three a year is the plan. And we have about 15 span wire intersections. So it's a program to be able to replace. They haven't been touched since tech stop put them in.
The, I'm sorry, the water, wastewater issues that we've had with the J-hack and all the cost out of there, how are those getting apportions?
I'm, we're just going to stick to general fund right now, if that's okay, councilman.
Okay, so though.
We talked about that in enterprise fund.
That's going in that direction. It's on a general fund item?
This, I, water and wastewater would be enterprise fund items, yes.
But those issues around that are not general fund items in here.
They shouldn't be.
All right, that's fine. That's fair. I'm going to just wrap up my, my comments. I think that there are some items on here that are like clear, they're justified. But I'm just going to say it. And, and talking with member Carbone, Mayor Protem Carbone early this week, you just have to say what you're going to say and if there's consensus or not. We are almost a dime off the no new rate, $7 million over. That's just too much. I, I'd be honest, I thought it was almost brazen when I saw the budget. And I still feel to a certain extent, it, it is a little brazen. I am happy that staff and wages are going up. I think it's really, really hard to retain people. I think we really have to look at our outlays on our sick pay buybacks, all the things around wages. Right? We're just really, really far off. The, the, the first page of the book says that no new value raised from new property is 1.4 million. That's a big delta between 1.4 and 7 million. That's discretionary spending. We're deciding to charge more and raise more revenue via taxes to go do that. And I just feel we need to have a more conservative financial position on this. The reality is we are going into recession. Whether the administration at the national level wants to go and say, it's not a recession yet, or it is, we're going into recession. And the government cannot grow grass, cannot grow faster than people's pocketbooks. In this case, it really feels like that's happening. I think there's hard decisions around fire trucks, its personnel and others, and that's what we're here to do. But $7 million in, in being a tax rate, just a hair under the no new rate, voter approval rate, is just too far. And I am appreciative that we are moving from .70 down to 62. That's because the state is mandating us do that, not because we are choosing to spend less. We need to spend a little less. We need to be more targeted and we need to prioritize that spending. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Kamkar. Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mine are a little bit higher level, not as granular. I've got one granular, so I'll get out of the way. IT software licenses, there was a big jump there. If you'll cover that already, just not sure. I didn't write that down, but it went from, looks like 70 to 650. It's kind of curious. Dan, you got anything?
Sure. There's several things that are making up IT software. So we added some things mid-year from the police department. That was approved is, I forgot what budget amendment it was, but that was approved. And then also the project management software was another one that we have to pick up that was approved this year as well.
Okay. So this is, is this going to be something that's long-term or is this just kind of a?
It's reoccurring expenses.
So we're. So we're increasing?
It's the software maintenance.
Did we just reclassify this somewhere, because I mean, a $600,000 jump seems significant?
So you have 250,000, or 187,000 reoccurring for, uh, project management software alone?
Okay.
Um, you also have, our Microsoft Enterprise Agreement is coming up, uh, this year, this is our last year, uh, we expect to jump it in that, we've already been notified that the costs have gone, gone up considerably, and we also have to cover, um, our database, uh, software package in that, so we expect an increase in that as well.
Okay, that, that seemed to be like the most glaring jump for me, so.
Yeah, there, there's also the security part, too, so cybersecurity is obviously on the forefront of everyone's mind, that renewal comes up as well, um, and, uh, we're at our third year, um, and we've seen significant cost increases there across the board, doesn't matter what, uh, software package you go with, they were anywhere from, uh, 15 to about 30% increases.
Wow, okay.
So it's significant.
When you, any, yeah, additional breakdown of that would be appreciated, uh, for the next meeting, uh, let's see here, uh, just from like a really high-level thing, if there's some way that we can think about a, a policy and tour, start trending towards just reduction of printing, I just, I see we have a lot of meetings, and sometimes we've got a lot of things printed, we'll use it for five seconds, and then we, you know, we get rid of it, so we just kinda look at incrementally over time, year over year, looking at ways to reduce our, our printing, it's not gonna have a significant impact, but it'll have an impact, I think, little by little, if we can just be, be a little bit more mindful on, um, printing, because it does come up in basically every department, uh, has a budget for that, uh, let's see, uh, oh, and to your point about kind of reallocating things, I love this new way of how we're looking at, uh, taking the costs and pushing them out to the different departments and breaking that up, that's really great, so I greatly appreciate that, that's fantastic. Um, on the, to, to, to the comment about sidewalks that, uh, Mr. Davis made, that was something that I was thinking about, and I remember maybe two budget cycles ago, asked about capacity, if we were to just grow money at sidewalks and say, let's just go fix them all, do we have that capacity to, I mean, because I think previously I was told that we have limited capacity, we can't just go out and say, okay, we're gonna fix everything this year, just kinda curious what that is.
I'll try to add in, but on the sidewalk side, I, I think we're done a great job, I mean, you remember, again, that CIP workshop, I believe you were there, but, uh, we, uh, you, it's, it's not all in one fell swoop, but, uh, adding money and getting a better contract and contract management on that, so we caught up on those, those work orders significantly, uh, so I think we're at the cusp of being almost there on that.
So I would add to that, that's, most of that work's done by contract, so, you know, we can increase that capacity by doing more through contracts, um, I, I think what you continually see there is even as we start to catch up, it's a, it's a continuous battle of new, uh, issues that, that occur out there, so we, you know, we can go out there and fix everything today, and we'll still have significant work to do, uh, from here.
And where, where are we on the, I know, uh, this is something that member Perez brought up a couple times, and about identifying where those gaps are, and coming up with a plan to address filling in sidewalk gaps, so we don't, basically don't have these discontinuous little strips of sidewalk.
Sure, so I, I think we, we're working on an inventory of what that is, and what the cost would be to fill in all those gaps, um, you know, we, we haven't annually allocated funds to actually go do a gap program, it is one of the, uh, projects that's, uh, been proposed and potentially on a future bond program, um, but we haven't really, uh, we've had such a backlog of existing sidewalk needs, that we haven't really concentrated much money on a gap program.
So maybe not for this budget, you know, looking to allocate, but at least coming up with a plan to start moving towards that, maybe for the, the next budget cycle that we've got, um, let's see, uh, this is something I bring up every single year, but whatever we can do to make it easier, and I know Francis has already, uh, had to deal with me searching for things, um, what if we can do to make it easier to search for, um, previous decisions that were made, previous agendas, things like that, um, if we need to start thinking about ways to clean that up, even just from a transparency perspective, I still would like to see an easier way to see how individual council members voted on things, stuff like that, I mean, I just think that it's gotta be easier than it is now, because it's currently very, very cumbersome, um, I just wanted to go back and look at a, a previous vote that I made, and, I mean, I think we exchanged, what, like six, seven emails, Francis, something like that, trying to, I'm probably just dumb, I don't know, okay, let's see, yeah, uh, let's see, and then I've got two, Eric, on that, that collections page that you had, where you showed that, the, uh, 104%, and you said that was due to, basically, we went back and collected maybe, um, taxes that were due, but weren't collected, is that 104% used in the calculation to come up with the, oh my gosh, that is, that is very frustrating to hear that, okay, um, well, I'm gonna be writing some letters then, all right, uh, and then last thing is, uh, and I know this one's gonna very for loop, and you're gonna say, why is he asking this, but I'm sure you'll figure it out, but, um, just kind of curious what the process is to address the homestead exemption amount that we have right now, the current amount that we've got, um, as the budget continues to evolve, if we can find ways to give people that actually call Pearland home, a little bit more of a break over time, I would like to examine that, I think it's currently with 2.5, with a cap of 5,000, um, just looking at some of our neighboring cities, it seems that, you know, they've got substantially higher, uh, exemptions, and just to kind of see what some of those scenarios would look like, I'd appreciate that, again, maybe not for this particular budget cycle, obviously, but for future ones, I'd just like to start exploring that. That's all I've got, thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Ms. Kate?
Okay, thank you, uh, some of mine have already been covered by Councilmember Kamkar, thank you, um, but I had a couple of questions, on slide 42, um, there was something, oh, on the Repair and Maintenance, that dropped significantly, is that, the 23 proposed? That's a question, I know that didn't sound like one, but why?
No, that, that's a good question, there's, so there's a lot of moving parts under there, and I'm running through them in my head of, okay, which, which departments, it'd be easiest for me to go in and do a little digging and get your response in writing, would that be okay?
Yes, that'd be fine, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, um, I also wanted to know, for the short-term rental, um, registration, have we started that, is there any revenue from that yet, and if so, where is that?
So that'll, that'll be one of the special revenue funds, uh, so Eric will yell at us, but it's, uh, it started, we're gonna, we actually asked for a note, we'll get you something next week on that, generally, it started, but it's minimal startup, you know, but it's also been identified what was from the STRs versus the regular hot, so.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it, thank you, and, um, one last thing, it's just really silly, but on slide 28, um, there was something, this is really minimal, but it just stuck out to me for some reason, for fire operations, two full-time conversions for 15,000, for parks and rec, one full-time conversion for 33,000, is that just based on what their previous salary was, or?
Yes, there are actually two part-time positions converting to become one full-time position in fire, which is why it is less expensive, the parks is a one-to-one conversion, so it's one part-time becoming one.
Thank you, and I, that makes a lot of sense, thank you, and then I also wanted to, um, just, I think I said this, uh, when we were talking about what we wanted, and I was told it would be for 2023, but I want to reiterate, um, a code enforcement position, or if, if that's possible, I know it's probably not, or for 2024, I guess it would be, if we could add, um, a code enforcement position, um, sometime soon, or two, or three, thank you.
Councilman Barry?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem, and I want to thank all you guys for putting all the work in, and, um, I, I really liked the summary up at the beginning, uh, then it goes into some of the gaps that you guys feel that, uh, you have requests for, and uh, kind of gives us some guidelines there, um, unfortunately, this is my first year at digesting a lot of this information, it's a lot of information, and I don't want to really get off too far in the weeds, but, uh, there are some certain things that I am passionate about, and one being drainage, so I kind of, I'm kind of picking on that, right? Okay, so, um, I'm trying to, originally I figured out, you know, I had a question about the FTEs that you calculated, uh, I think I kind of figured that out earlier this morning, um, and then I want to refer to, uh, page 13, I guess, of the binder, where it talks about drainage fund and, uh, staffing needed, didn't we have, didn't we have some recs open already for, for that department, uh, weren't we trying to hire people, uh, in, in that area, no, not at all, and so in order to support our current, uh, service needs, or the $2 million of additional funding that we're generating, or we're, we're including for maintenance and drainage, uh, those are the employees that we have set aside that we feel like we're gonna need to accomplish that?
Right, so we had people as part of overall streets and drainage, and you'll hear about that more in a few minutes, but, uh, we've got six of those people moving over to that drainage fund, or at least four, six, six, and then we're adding bodies on top of that, so that's the 600,000 that Council talked about earlier this year, so, but you'll, you'll hear about that, too.
Okay, so, um, you're also, uh, you also mentioned here you have a CCTV tech, um, but we currently don't have any CCTV equipment, so is that going to, is that allocated somewhere, or are we contracting, or what are we doing?
That CCTV truck is part of the $662,000 that'll be purchased with the new staff.
Okay, so it's part of the new, the $600,000 we allocated earlier?
Yes, the seven new positions and all their equipment to onboard is included in that.
Okay, I saw that, um, just to kind of give you an idea, um, and I, and I kind of want to reiterate some of the things that previous council members said about alleviating pressure on our maintenance and operations funds, and going back to, you know, understanding where our tax revenues are coming from, you know, I personally have a belief that, you know, we should partner with our EDC guys, uh, Matt, Matt's in the audience today, uh, thanks for coming out, um, you know, I think that, you know, we should, we should utilize and work with EDC to use the money that they're getting from the half-cent sales tax, it's already tax money that we're putting into that fund on an annual basis, and it grows a little bit here and there, I think it grew about 300 or 400,000 over the last year, so, um, that being said, I would prefer to utilize those funds, if at all possible, and I feel like that it is possible in some way, shape, or form, if we want it to be, and then we can go ahead and tax the maintenance and operations budget, I'm not saying that we should necessarily, you know, bear, EDC should bear the entire burden, I'm, I'm willing to work with, with those guys and figure out a, a max cap, and not to, because they have important work that they are doing for the city, and they've done a great job for the city, and then expanding the city, and bringing new businesses to the city, so I don't want to discount all that work that they've done, but I feel like the $2 million, not, not necessarily the equipment and infrastructure and think, I mean, not, not necessarily the equipment, uh, but maybe the people, uh, could be, bear the burden on the M and O, and then on the actual projects themselves, we can work with EDC on getting those projects done through their, their taxing entity, well, those are the two cents that I had there, I had a bunch of other questions that I had highlighted, uh, as it pertains to, uh, drainage, uh, FTEs, and, um, where was that other one? And I guess later on, when we get to, we're talking about EDC later, we'll, we'll go through that as well, so, uh, that's all I have today.
For now, not for today.
For the General Fund.
Yep, thanks. All right. Councilman Owens, General Fund?
I don't have any questions right now, that, uh, on this, it's, uh, you know, sent through several of these budget processes, but I know what the staff and everything goes through to come up with these numbers and kind of the forecast, so I appreciate the effort and, and man-hours or personnel hours that they put into it, so I don't have any questions right now.
Thank you, and, um, I, I just had a few, first of all, you know, Saturday morning, thank you everybody for coming out, um, and the Budget Office, and this is, for us, it kicks off the, the season, but for y'all, it's, I don't know, midway, um, through it, so thanks for the work put in, um, just a couple things, uh, PD's talked about, uh, sick time buyback, um, so I don't know if we can get an update on that, if that's in here, um, if that's something we can look at, um, slide 44, um, and I think this might go to a couple of Councilman Kamkar's questions as well, so this, this 65.1 in public safety, that's inclusive of the IT transfers, and this is the first year of the IT transfers.
Correct.
So, um, yeah, I mean, that's gonna skew everything, so essentially, the drop in the gray line in general government is, is being pushed out and allocated to all the other departments.
Exactly.
Um, so I think that's gonna be a lot of the spikes when you look high-level, um, and I, I wouldn't ask you to go back and recast it, but I like having that allocation going forward, I think it'll make sense, but I think in the back of our minds, we just need to make a middle note of that, that's gonna be some of the increases when we look at the departmental side, um, um, PPOA mentioned retention, um, if we can have HR and budget get us something back that kind of addresses some of those concerns, not only at the PD level, but, uh, but for the whole city, uh, and then finally, um, for now, you know, we've, we've got appraisals have gone up, our tax rate's going down, but our, our property tax collection's still, still going up, i- this is all off the back of the commercial and non-homestead, right? I mean mechanically, that's it, if, if you're saying everybody out there, their tax bill is going down if their home, if they've got a homestead exemption, all this is either A, coming off new, new homes, or B, it's, it's gonna be business and commercial property.
Exactly, I mean, there's no magic money, and, uh, but, uh, as you know, that's the system we have, and, uh, so, uh, yeah, you're, you're right.
Yeah, so I appreciate where Councilman Hernandez is coming from, but, um, I mean, this is the first year that you can look every citizen in the eye and say their tax, their, their bill's going down in rate and in dollar, and it's coming off the back of business and commercial, which ties into EDC and, and getting our more diverse tax base, uh, anyway, that's, and then when we look at, at water rates here in a little bit, that's coming off the back of commercial as well, it's, it's, it's becoming more, more and more costly for businesses to do business and be located in Pearland, and with that, um, unless anybody think, has anything else on General Fund, we'll move into Debt Service?
Right. All right, this fund's a lot more straightforward than, uh, the, the General Fund, it's a little bit smaller, so, the city has two debt funds, uh, one is tax-backed debt, which we're gonna talk about now, and one is Enterprise Debt Fund, so that's your water and sewer debt, and very importantly, keep those separate, we'll talk about the Enterprise, uh, Debt Fund later on in this presentation, so, tax-backed debt, this is where we budget for all the revenue and expenditures for all of our tax-backed debt, so when you see, uh, we talk about the debt service, uh, sorry, the, the debt rate for our property taxes, that's where this, that money goes, is into the Debt Service Fund, uh, expenditures in this fund pay for, uh, non-enterprise systems, so there's no water and sewer projects or debt being paid for in here, uh, they also pay for mud rebates, the tax rate has two components, like I said, the O and M in Debt Service, this is the Debt Service portion of the property tax rate, uh, and again, tax-backed debt is paid for by property taxes, the primary driver of the amount of debt in this fund is gonna be the, the CIP project, so when a CIP project is authorized, uh, we go out, we ask Council for permission, hey, we want to build this project, here's how we want to fund it, you know, there's different ways of funding things, cash, debt, different types of debt instruments, if it's a debt instrument, and it's not a water and sewer project, that debt then gets paid back out of this fund. The FY23 proposed Debt Service Rate is 34 cents, with an estimated levy of $44.2 million, we are not committing any money from fund balance this year, uh, the new state worksheet and the rules as they get flushed out, uh, removes that need or possibility. This is a little bit different from FY22, where we had 5.4 million in committed fund balance, however, the overall Debt Service Rate is decreasing from 0.39 to 0.34, uh, and the overall, uh, levy is increasing from 38.2 million to 44.2 million. This is the income statement for the Debt Service Fund summary. This is the income statement for the debt service fund summary. This is exactly what you see in your budget book. So $48 million in revenue. Here's where you see the expenditures. So you have your bond payments of 38.8 million. That's your debt. And then you have mud rebates, which this year we are budgeting at $7.7 million. You can see last year they ended up being about $2.3 million. There are no muds rolling off this year. And with growth being the way it is, we, this is a good guess of where it's going to be. But of course, we'll keep you apprised when those, that information comes in later on in the year. Here's a chart of tax back debt over time. FY22 and 20, or FY23 is right here. So about $399 million in GOs projected to increase to 411 and then start gliding off at a good clip here in FY25. One of the ways governments across the country look at the amount of debt they have and their ability to pay is to look at the total tax, tax back debt over time. Here you can see two lines. The dark line here, the darker green line is the tax back debt percent of assessed value with the tourist debt. The lighter green line is without the tourist debt. For FY23 with tourist debt, we're looking at 2.8%. For FY23 without the tourist debt, we're looking at 2.4%. Both of them are a 10th of a percent decrease. Questions on the debt fund?
All right, that was quick. We'll start in here. Councilman Owens? Barry? Hernandez? Wow.
Just, just to get, so the discussion around the TCEQ and all those costs is not as a part of that either?
No, that would, that would be part of the enterprise system.
I'm good as well.
All right, well then I will ask, if you can go to slide 49, I've got a quick question.
Sure.
So our revenues of 48.7, expenses of 46.6. So we'll, we'll have a net growth or a net, net positive of 2.1 adding to the beginning balance. And we're 1.5 million over policy. Can we cut the debt service rate? What's stopping us from, from decreasing the debt service rate even further?
So I would just offer, we could, and thought about that. The only caveat is the trepidations about the calculations and, and how everything's moving. Just to give us a little bit extra hedge, you know, we came in a little short this year, both on the general fund and the debt service side. So, you know, because of the, remember Hernandez talked about the over collections piece. There's also the tax ceilings that is, we lowered significantly for that worksheet. And so that, but it's an estimate. And so there's a little trepidation about trying to cut that down too much, so. It's, it's a choice.
Question, you said in the slide earlier, you had the M and O. One penny of M and O is 1.6. It was like 1.3.
1.6.
1.6. In this application, what is a debt penny? Is it roughly equivalent or is it in a different denomination?
I, I believe it'd still be 1.6 million.
Logic would be that it's similar, but I'd hate to swear to that without knowing just.
Let us look.
Can we get some follow up? Because I guess the point to, to member Carbon's, if you look in the lower right, and maybe member Carbon can put it. That's essentially one penny over policy. Is that, if, if it's 1.6, roughly speaking, a penny? I, I would, I would be, if we could, if we could get there, I would, I would be wanting to go there.
We'll get that figured out and get it to you.
Yeah, if you can get some more information, that'd be good. All right, and with that, we're, go ahead.
Can I just have one, I'm just naive question here. Why, why would we underfund our debt service?
So we're not underfunding it. We're, as member Carbon says, we're, we're boosting the bottom line a wee bit, so.
Previous years.
Previous year. It gets complicated. So you said funds.
10 words or less.
I can't do it. See that bottom left where it talks about funds committed? That's what we did to try to, and we did lower the debt service rate. So because of the calculation, we had to sort of tell, not sort of. We told the county tax office that we were committing fund balance to lower what they would have told us on the rate. And so it, it was estimation on our part and plan, you know, trying to commit to that and not short ourselves and yet not have the rate come in higher than we needed to. That's gone now with the new formula, so we can't do that. And so that's why that's not, there's nothing in that bottom right. And then as member Carbon, so that's my only fear about trying to lower the penny. And we came in short this year. That's why you see, you know, that negative 1.8.
1.8, yeah.
That's kind of, that's what happened. So it's this thing with tax freezes and, and caps and trying to estimate how much revenue we'll get off of that. We estimate in the past like 82% and now we're down to 74. So it's a huge number. So 8% means a big difference there.
So, so are, am I correct in assuming that now with the new formulas, we no longer have to estimate? Or is it?
Well, we don't have to, we don't get to, we don't have to estimate on that funds committed because it's baked into the formula now, which is fine. But we don't do that anymore. But then it hurt us this year because the freezes, the money from the freeze, frozen property didn't come in as high as it had in the past. And so that's why we came in 1.8 short.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
In theory, could hold that, we could see those freezes come to fruition this year. I, I think a good, a good write-up will be good. I'm, and I'm not, just to be clear, I'm not advocating a full penny to get that to zero, but maybe a half cent. But yeah, we can discuss that once we get the write-up.
More than real quick. The, on the file that we had on the city letter, the city transmital letter with the blue, black and the green little bars. The rate was 39 cents on debt. And now we're projecting across all three scenarios, no new revenue, voter approved rollback rate in current budget, 34 cents. We have a real clear recitation, a follow-up item of what is the delineation between that?
I don't need to write anything up. It, it's a flat number that's dictated to us by the amount. We have to take in and cover 46.6 million dollars worth of debt payments. And so the calculation gives you that flat rate. That's why it's the same throughout, pretty true.
All right, internal service funds?
All right, internal service funds. So internal service funds are kind of a unique sort of fund where we use them to ensure the internal operating costs as well as any long-term liabilities, like replacement costs are accounted for in our fleet and also in our IT and facilities funds this year, which we've added. I'll talk about those. These provide a source of funding for required and planned replacement of assets. So if staff comes to council and says, hey, you know, in five years, we're going to have a $10 million expense on, you know, item X. We have $2 million. Maybe you want to put that aside now. This is sort of where that money can go hang out and sit and we can save, save for when those expenditures will come up. It helps us level out spikes and expenses and things like that. So we really like them in the finance department. It also helps create clarity by delivering the true cost of owning, operating and replacing assets by department. And, you know, this is something you can approve every year. And I think the idea is eventually to get it into divisions as well, so that you get a real accurate cost accounting of what is the service cost to deliver. Like I said, it helps with predictability. It can, over time, they'll eliminate year-to-year swings and needed revenue from the general fund. And then finally, they'll decouple replacement needs from what may or may not be available in any given year in the general fund. So that, you know, ideally five, 10 years from now, when you need to buy a fire truck, that money is there in the motor pool. Great, we're not asking the general fund to pay for it. So these are things that we're building up over time. Motor pool is our oldest one and headed in the right direction according to performance metrics, and we'll show those off in a second. So motor pool fund was implemented in 2019. When we start that, started that, 0% of vehicles were covered by lease fees. We use this terminology, lease fees. You might hear it like replacement cost. What it means is when we buy that vehicle, it's, if it's $50,000 and we expect it to last 10 years, you know, you divide 50,000 by 10, start putting away $5,000 a year for that vehicle in the motor pool fund. And then when you need to replace that vehicle, take it out of the motor pool fund and you start the same thing over. Just like if you were replacing your own car and you just keep making that car payment to yourself. So you have money to replace it when it's done. Now we're going to do that for IT and facilities. Like I said, it's the first year, so a lot of hydraulic changes. So if you're looking at the budget and you're like, where, why did this drop so much? These funds are kind of the first place my mind goes. We have a risk management fund. So this is where we handle things like workers' compensation and insurance reimbursements. The real personal property building value for FY23 for the city is $349 million. Our premiums are projected at $2.2 million. And the fund is projected to end FY23 with the balance of $1,007,000, which is just slightly above the fund's minimum reserve target of $1 million. The medical self-insurance fund is, has a claims total of $8.6 million and administrative fees totaling $1.7 million. The ending balance of this fund of, is, sorry, the ending target balance of this fund is 25%. We expect to exceed that by 4% at the end of FY23. The motor pool fund, the purpose of this fund again is to provide for the maintenance and replacement of the city's vehicles and rolling stocks. The current estimated value of the city's vehicles and equipment is $33.8 million. We're taking a phased approach where as we replace vehicles, we add lease fees to them each year. So each year we make good progress on this. There's always a year delay. So any vehicles the council approves to be replaced this year that are not already paying lease fees, so ones that are entering the motor pool, you, that lease fee isn't added till FY24. So that's when we start the clock on things as we build them into the next budget year. In the, if the proposed budget is approved, we estimate that we will end FY23 with about 37% of vehicles covered by lease fees. It's an estimate just based off delivery timelines and delays that everyone's heard about in the news with, it's hard to get vehicles these days, but you know, we'll get the orders in and we'll budget for them as if they're coming. In the general fund, we have a replacement list of vehicles of $980,000 this year. I'm not going to go over all these, but we did list them out. You can see on this page, it's a lot of police patrol vehicles. There's a fire marshal vehicle, an F-150 for EPW, a Ford F-250 for Parks. Continuing on, some more police vehicles. You have another EPW vehicle, Parks vehicle, some fire vehicles. On this page, you can see all EPW vehicles. So this is not, you know, water and sewer side of things. Sorry, this, in the motor pool it can be, so forget that I just said that. But you have vehicles for distribution and collections, meter services, right away, water production, et cetera. So that was the motor pool fund. Moving on to the IT fund. So this is a brand new fund this year. The purpose of this fund is to provide for the maintenance and replacement of the city's current and future tech needs. The 21 full-time employees, we are adding one new employee to IT this year that we highlighted earlier on when we were talking in the general fund, because that's part of what pays for this. But everyone who is currently in IT, in the general fund or the enterprise fund, have been moved into the IT fund. So now I, this fund is where all of our IT staff will live from now on. It's modeled right after the successfully implemented motor pool fund. Again, we are allocating cost to departments based off where those costs sit. So if Parks has a specific software for registering people for athletics classes and it costs $10,000 a year, you'll see that as charged out to Parks in the IT, it'll be a charge out to the IT fund for Parks. And that's where that revenue will come from. If an item like Microsoft where staff are all using it, we just charge that out on a per FTE basis, each department. Each FTE pays an equal share because everyone uses those systems. And again, this will be a substantial improvement in transparency. Facilities fund, similar idea, brand new fund. The purpose of the fund is to provide for building related repair and maintenance costs, equipment maintenance, capital replacement cost or asset recapitalization cost and janitorial services. Again, modeled after the motor pool. The goal is to be funded on a building or department basis. So that if a, a cost for the city hall annex is going to be eventually reflected in a budget for the city hall annex, so we get to that clarity, that's going to take a few years to get to that level of data of where these costs are coming from. It's part of the asset management program. So this is the first step in getting there. So right now what you'll see is there's one account transfer from the general fund, one account transfer from the enterprise fund that go to the facilities fund, and that pays for the whole thing. The facilities fund is again a major improvement in transparency and helps you see the full cost of programs and will get better and better as time goes on. Questions on the internal service funds?
I have one question. On the motor pool fund summary, there's, um, under capital outlay, those numbers for the original and then the amended are vastly different. Did you explain that and I missed it or?
No, you didn't miss it. So my staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that these are vehicles that we've brought to council for funding at mid-year or other budget amendments and council approved. So they weren't in the original budget, which was adopted in the fall, but throughout the year on a vehicle by vehicle basis. It was, hey, we'd like to have, you know, $50,000 here, $100,000 here for this vehicle. Council then approved it and that worked its way into the amended budget.
It's like 4.5 million though, isn't it? Difference?
Yes, and we can look up, what I can do is get you the records on what that jumped and any memos that we put out associated with it.
All right, thank you.
Let's see, start down there, Cozum.
Yeah, and the IT fund, when we had one taken from, I guess Dan's part of the city into the police department or the one that we're hiring, is that to cover, help Dan back or help the police department?
And you want to talk a little bit about how that person will be used?
Sure. So we added a, a staff member, I think it was last year, and it was dedicated to public works. And during the initial like onboarding of the employee, we moved them around to get them exposed to every single department. We wound up at the very end in the police department. Their needs grew significantly and we were completely understaffed. So we left them at PD to cover their needs. And then we transitioned and we, we never got them over to the public works department to actually do the support over there. So in order to backfill for public works, we turned around and are only offering them one day a week in support. So the new position will probably backfill into public works and will leave the employee that was supposed to be dedicated to public works, capital projects, engineering. That's what the new position would do.
All right, thank you.
Camcar? Thank you, sir. So Eric, on these funds, these are one-time, I would say distributions, we'll call it contributions in this space. One-time contributions from the general fund into these buckets?
So it, it, they are recurring costs. So just, you know, every year we're going to be buying vehicles. And as the motor pool, more and more lease fees kick in, eventually the general fund will have to transfer less and less into the motor pool unless there's a new vehicle the city wants to purchase.
But I'm thinking like for like the IT fund or the facilities.
There are, so there are staff in there. There are, like, the IT staff is part of the inter-IT funds and that's going to be a regular cost each year, not a one-time cost.
But then this also buys like equipment too?
Yes.
So then the general fund or like a budget item contributes, maybe its personnel is allocated here. Is there just dollars that go in there that we save up for a rainy day?
Yes, so, and that, that's one of the, the purposes of these funds. So here, for example, the IT fund, we're trying to build some fund balance, which is why you have a net position of $400,000. You know, that's kind of rainy day money. Or if an opportunity comes up where there's a grant and we need to find 10K to get 100K worth of software or something, you could look here.
It's less painful as opposed to like an emergency supplemental, like all of our computers broke, we need to go buy more.
Yeah, the idea is, you know, you can, you can park stuff here and then also long, for those long-term cost of, hey, in a few years, we have a really expensive piece of software we know we're going to replace, let's start putting a down payment on it.
On the, and then I've got three questions specifically on the motor pool fund, I guess it's slide 50. guess it's slide 58, what is the goal number in terms of what is the amount that we want to sit there? I know we have a lot of vehicles and that they need to do replacement, they need to be phased in and phased out. Is there a goal number that we're trying to hit?
I don't have a goal number in terms of dollars because the vehicle costs keep changing as time goes on. But ideally, we would like to have 100% of vehicles and equipment covered by lease fees. And that's what we're working towards as well as 100% of the fleet by value.
What would that number be? Just out of, what would 100% possibly look like? If 37% is, I guess, $14 million, or sorry, it'd be, whatever, one of these numbers needs to be multiplied times three. Is it 14 or 17 or 7?
It's, it's a little bit harder than that because all these vehicles have different lifespans and that goes into the charges. Let me get something to you in writing and that'll be a much more accurate number.
That's fine. And then on the IT funds, that's the new one for this year, same question, do we have a goal number that we want to eventually shoot for? Obviously, personnel goes in there and I get that. But in terms of what do we want to be able to replace, when do we want to replace it? Is there a number?
Dan, Dan might want to comment on this, but I know that that's something we're looking to come out of the IT strategic planning process is to help us get the North Star nailed down of what are we, where are we trying to go with this and what that's going to cost.
Same question for the facilities. Dan, did you have the answer to that?
I think Eric answered it pretty well. I mean, there is several software and hardware packages that are coming up for either going to be obsoleted or need to look at replacement. And obviously, we have no fund balance right now to, to cover those expenses.
And then for the facilities fund, same question, do we have a goal number? I know it's a newly created fund, but buildings get replaced just like other things, but...
Yeah, and that's, that's going to be a project over the next year for the Budget Office and EPW is to, let's get that number for council so we can figure out where we're at and what each year we should be contributing. And then that's another option for council of how much to fund.
And I want to now tie the bow on this and then make my point. On the motor pool funds, on slide 58, we're, we're $2.1 million, I guess, contributing above the need for the projected budget. Is that an accurate assessment?
So a lot of those-
The number in the lower right corner, I guess.
So the revenues exceed expenditures because we are buying fewer vehicles than we have in the past. But the revenues reflect, a lot of, a lot of it is lease costs. So a vehicle might be in year three of its five years worth of lease payments it's going to make. So you, what you'll expect to see in this fund is continuing building fund balance so that we can start to draw down on that fund balance. That hasn't happened yet just because the fund is so new. But as this continues to mature in a year or two, probably, when we start to buy vehicles that are already, have their vehicle replacement funded out of this fund, you'll start to see drawdowns and then rebalancing and-
Help me understand that real quick. So we're 2.1 above budget. I'm going to use budget lose. So the general fund is kicking in 9.2 million across all the categories. You know, different budget, you know, Parks and Rec has trucks and this group has trucks and cars. But there's $9.2 million in revenue, I'm just going to say, going into this bucket and there's 7.1 million in cost right now. Is that-
So then the 9.2 million is reflective of all of the city's vehicles and needs. So enterprise fund is in here too. That's the other major portion. And we are buying $7 million worth of new vehicles. But I, it can help clarity. So think about it, like if we wanted to balance this and your revenues equaled what you're going to spend, when the vehicles that are currently paying lease fees go to be replaced, there won't be enough money in the fund to pay for their replacement.
But that's for down the line though. Somewhere down the line though, right?
Yes, but it's going to happen.
Agreed. We're not debating that. And then for the IT funds, I just want to point out, similar situation. Obviously, this is in the first year. It's $400,000 going in from the general fund into this bucket over and above the needs today.
It's, it's three or four funds, but yes.
Agreed. And then, so 2.1 plus 400 is 2.5 million. And then the facilities fund is roughly 260,000, what's called a quarter million. So between those two numbers, let me add you math here, let me count in my head. 2.1 plus 400,000, 2.5, another 260, so we're 2.7 million. Going back to the point that I made earlier about the fiscal conservatism, this is over and above what is said in this budget is needed. That is coming from the general fund, which is mom and dad taxes, sales tax. We want to cut that $7 million number down to a number that we can actually afford. I'm not saying it should all come here. I'm not saying we shouldn't have a balance that should go and help build it. Because I understand it. For these new funds, we need to build for the facilities fund, for grants fund. But there is places where we can cut and the city will not explode if we don't do it. Or we could say, can we give those cents back to the taxpayer? So I just want to point that out. This is important. I agree, the need and the want to go and build these funds. I understand why we're doing them. But I don't know that we need to go and be 2.5 million in the case of, I thought a penny was 800,000. Apparently, I'm being told it's 1.6. We'll get a thing on that. It's at least a penny. Just pointing out.
Correct one piece of your math there. Again, as Eric said-
I've done my, I appreciate that. I've done my piece on that.
It's more than general funds, so.
Thank you. I'm a big fan of internal service funds. I love that we're continuing down this road. Remember, we started with motor pool fund. I think it's been great to have. And I think to the point that was just made, I'm actually really glad that we're doing this. I think that the conservative thing to do, the fiscally responsible thing to do is to start building up some reserves and thinking long-term. And it just from a personal perspective, you know, even when times are potentially rough, you still got to put that money away and plan for the future. So I'm glad that we're, we're thinking ahead here. I don't really have much to say other than, you know, I think this is a, a good trend that we're adopting. And my only question would be that how, approximately how long would you say, Eric, does it take for us to get a good handle when we start a new fund like this on what an appropriate amount actually is? Like, you know, we start these funds and over time, as they get into a groove, how do we, how do we come up with that calculation? Approximately, how long does it take for us to, to reach that?
In terms of what the total value of these, these items are, or in terms of what the transfer from funds would need to be in like the annual cost?
Something, I guess what the transfer would be. So the, the total value, I'm assuming would be easier to, to project.
Yeah. So the, the motor pool, you know, I'm going to go back to the motor pool. It's still young enough that the vehicles haven't even, the vehicles we purchased with into the motor pool and are paying lease fees, they haven't even come due yet to start paying the second, you know, where they're paid for already. So we're not quite there yet. But we do have an estimated number of, you know, here's the current value of the fleet. The issue with saying it's going to cost X dollars each year is that the fleet isn't on an even replacement cycle in terms of dollars. So some years, 10 vehicles might age out and need to be replaced and they might just be Ford F-150s and, you know, 50,000 bucks a pop. Some years, it might be two fire trucks and you're looking at $2 million a pop. That's what the motor pool will help, you know, in the long term. Then you'll see a more level approach because it'll just be those lease fees going at each year. And then any, if, if council adds a position that needs a vehicle, you would need to pay for that out of the specific fund.
So would you say, I mean, just to throw it out there, I hate doing arbitrary numbers, but would you say that these funds take like maybe 10 years to figure out or five years or?
I'd say closer to five. I'd see, the motor pool was started in 2019 and we're getting pretty mature there. The numbers are starting to, to levelize. The, the last big challenge is, is our vehicles, just because there's, there's a few of them, but they're very expensive.
Right, yeah.
And then, you know, with facilities, that'll, that'll take a, a year or two to get to the point where we can start assessing cost to departments. And then, at the same time, we're working on sort of what should the actual, you know, actualized value each year that we need to put into that fund be to maintain.
So when we create a fund like this, would you say that you're trying to be more conservative or maybe a little bit more aggressive in getting the, the funds initially in these accounts?
Just conservative in terms of not-
I, I think we've put in there, from our perspective, decent down payments, but not where we want to be. I mean, there's, there's a big need left for, you know, we're still having to buy equipment outside of this. And so-
Yeah. I mean, from my perspective, looking at this and seeing the report that came out on the facilities assessment, I mean, this seems like a, a very small amount. I would personally think that it would need to be higher than this, but I don't know how these calculations-
That'd be mine. And the, the facility's a good one. We've got actual information there that shows you should be doing X, Y, and Z. We don't have that in there. That was one of those things that's unfunded. We can't go to here for it. We're trying to build that up and we're just trying to defer what we can. But yeah, there's more that we need to be doing.
I, I think these are wholly appropriate just from, you know, initial assessment. So I think we're good here and I like this trend. Thank you.
Councilman Ked?
On the IT fund, would, would stuff like even the new planning software be included in there? Would be all software for the city?
So for the new planning software, the mechanics of that is it's being paid out of the ARPA fund. But then the regular maintenance of that, so if, if it's a contract of $75,000 a year to maintain, that would get added to the IT fund and then charged back to the department so that the department's cost reflects that ongoing cost.
But to your point, if we didn't have that ARPA opportunity this year, we, in, you know, six years or something, we'd be able to tap that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Barry?
Thank you, Mayor. And I really, I really do like these, these, these funds set up the way it is. Do you actually have, let's just pick on IT because it's kind of one of my nemesis from the school district.
Sorry, Dan.
I don't ever want IT to be part of a bond program. Just letting you know that. So if you ever think about it, it's not, I'm not, I'm going to fight against it. Anyway, just to pick on IT for a little bit, I know that it's a brand new fund and I would assume that each one of these, I guess, buckets would have some sort of roadmap or plan for replacement or a long-term view, like a capital improvement plan per item that you guys have defined.
Again, reference here, the strategic plan work going on.
Yeah. So we're working on that right now with the IT strategic plan to come up with long-term solutions. We know there's a, a number of software and hardware packages that need to be replaced in the next few years. I can give you an example of like PD, OSSI software. That component right there, I forgot how long we've had it, but we've had it for a number of years. The company that bought it has actually come out and said, no new updates. They'll, they'll continue to fix it and patch it as necessary, but there are no new updates coming out for it. So that's one very large package that we've known right off the bat.
It's not just software, right? It's hardware as well. So server components, switches-
Correct.
Things of that sort as well.
Correct. So-
Over time, I know for the district, it costs us about $17 million to do a wholesale replacement of our IT infrastructure. So is there, I guess you're going to build this plan at a more rapid rate once your roadmap gets defined, I guess, your replacement timeline gets defined?
Yes, and we should be able to present that to council too. So you guys can see exactly what we are looking at from a cost perspective.
And I mean, that, that really just goes for all these other funds as well, you know, you know, the motor pool, I think you did a pretty good job of explaining that, the facilities and all those things. Each one of those, I would assume would have some sort of capital outlay or capital improvement plan associated with that, just to make sure that we're on track to be able to maintain each one of these items. Okay, thank you. That's it.
You're going to have to leave your school board baggage at the other door.
Councilman Owens?
All right. Next up, special, special revenue funds.
All right. Moving on to special revenue funds. So this is a list of all the special revenue funds. This comes from the financial summaries tab. As you can see, we have a lot of them and not all of them are super high dollar. So I'm going to focus on the ones that I wanted to highlight today. But of course, if you have questions about any of them, we're more than happy to, to answer those today or in writing. So there's a lot of great stuff happening with the ARPA fund and I'm going to hand that over to Grant Master Joel.
Thank you, Eric. So real briefly, just to cover the history, we were allocated 11.8, 11.9 million in 2021. The 22 budget, including some expenses we incurred late in 21 when we first got the money, totaled about 6.9 million. So we've got 4.9 available to spend from '23 through the end of the period of performance for that program, which is December 31st of 2024. And the decision has been made to allocate a little over 2.5, 2.6 million to some needs in fire. We've mentioned the replacement vehicle assets that come in the form of two fire trucks, a truck and a ladder rather, and also some improvements to some existing high water rescue vehicles to put that rear elevating structure in the, in the back to help with rescue operations. And that's, that's, that's pretty much it. If you go to the next slide, Eric, there are a couple of ancillary expenses we'll mention that should be noted. The 425,000 for the permitting software is in there as well as a forced account labor for public safety, the 1.6 million that tie into the response to COVID that we'll be able to accommodate in that regard. And there'll be a $250 fund, $250,000 fund balance for any future needs we can identify.
One of the really important new funds this year is the drainage maintenance fund. The development of the, the drainage utility fund was a result of the process that the city began where with early discussions on having a, a charge drainage fee, the drainage, ultimately, things have gone in a different direction, but it's, that's what started this discussion. And really, that, the discussions around that utility fee focused on three categories of expenditures for drainage. Maintenance, so your, your day-to-day maintenance for, in that staff and equipment cost and what we need to spend on that. Small capital projects, so items, you know, as we're out working around and say, oh, okay, this is not just cleaning, we need to fix something here and it's going to cost 200 grand or anything up to 500 grand. We kind of call these small capital projects. And then the third part of drainage spending would be your, your large capital projects, your, your bond items where you're going to get voter approval on. The creation of this fund begins the process of addressing the first two drainage categories, the maintenance and small capital project categories. The drainage maintenance fund begins a new maintenance phase by dedicating staff, equipment and funding to begin conducting maintenance activities in a program-driven approach, route, in, in a proactive approach rather than a reactive approach. Council supported the drainage maintenance budget through the approval of resolution 39. This resolution dedicated to drain, this resolution dedicated funding to drainage maintenance in this year's budget and we've carried through on that. We know that this is a priority for council. We, we talk about it a lot. And this is, you know, the first step in this process. I want to let you know some of the hydraulics in the budget in case you're looking at engineering and public works budget. In previous years, so prior to the FY23 budget we're looking at, they had a division called Streets and Drainage. What we've done is we've broken that division up. Streets stays in general fund, drainage came over to the drainage fund. Those people now live over here in the drainage fund. And that's what you see here under this transfer in. That 1.3 million, that's what it's paying for is those previous existing drainage people and activities that we were already paying for. It was just over in the general fund. So we've moved them and all their associated cost, contracts, things like that. And then we've added $662,000 as outlined by council to fund a new drainage maintenance and operations crew. So that's where you see this other revenue source here for this fund of $662,000. And then PEDC is contributing $23,000 to this fund. The, looking on the expense side for the drainage maintenance fund, about $750,000 for salaries and wages, a $470,000 for miscellaneous services. So contracting is where that would show up. And then $494,000 for lease payments. The bulk of this is going to be purchasing a, a vehicle that they need to get started with doing this work. And if you have questions about that vehicle, I'm sure our friends in EPW can answer that. Overall, we had six existing staff that were in the general fund that had been moved to this fund, that they were working on drainage, they'll continue working on drainage. And we are adding seven new staff. So a good increase in staff for the drainage fund. They're going to be doing that daily operational maintenance. Look, thinking about outcomes, what are we getting for this investment? Both the enclosed pipe and open ditch drainage systems will be inspected clean and restored to original capacity on a 10-year cycle. There's, this gives, investment gives us a 3X increase in ditch cleaning. Previously, it was a 30-year cycle. We're going to 10. Prior to FY23, enclosed pipes have never been proactively inspected and cleaned. They were only reacted to when there was an active issue. So that's hard to measure because we're going from zero to new. But, you know, that, that is quite a good outcome. I want to talk about the master drainage plan. So the master drainage plan, in 2019, the city and Drainage District 4- So the master drainage plan, in 2019, the city and Drainage District 4 completed a partnership to develop a shared master drainage plan that would be utilized to guide future drainage infrastructure needs. The current plan is a static model and is developed around the needs for regional infrastructure and uses past rainfall criteria. The model has limitations. It's time to update that, the master drainage plan, with new data from HCFCD, which is the Clear Creek Model, new firm maps and new Atlas 14 rainfall data. The MDP update will focus on producing a new dynamic model that'll be able to model various rainfalls over time and identify areas of concern throughout the city. It will also assist in identifying projects from a regional, subregional, and local level. These projects can be prioritized for funding opportunities through the CIP. So this plan helps us get a better model, helps us understand where the needs are at in the city, and then as those needs come up, we can prioritize them in the CIP. And that's what'll get the work done on those larger projects. It also can be used to identify projects that can benefit city businesses and commercial areas that could, in those projects, could be potentially funded through PEDC. Staff recommend an approach to this that would fund the updated master drainage program with PEDC kicking in a third, Drainage District 4 kicking in a third, and the city kicking in a third of the overall cost.
Just to add a little bit to that, to be clear, we have not approached BDD4 on this yet. This is a priority that we've identified a little bit late. This was an item that was in the capital bond program, and they suggested that be removed from there as a planning tool versus a capital project. And so we need to fill that gap because we do need this plan. So the one-third options was developed. I don't think we have the one-third from the city side identified yet, but we'll come back to you at that. We've got some legwork to do on this. But it is significant dollars. Raj and Robert can talk for hours about the necessity and how this upgraded plan will really help us for identifying and analyzing what's out there and where our best dollars are going forward.
Small capital projects, so let me wax poetic a second about the vision for this fund. The vision is that the Drainage Operations Fund will cash fund small capital project on an as-needed basis so that when crews are out and they see something that needs $200,000 of repair, it doesn't go into the five-year CIP because it's a smaller item. Ideally, we would have the cash in this fund and they go fix it. We're not there yet, that's the vision, though. Previously, these small capital projects were really an unmet need. Funding for these sorts of projects was not typically available in previous years. We had to kind of find funding as we needed or roll it into the CIP. Over multiple fiscal years, again, the goal is to have a regular amount budgeted for this. We don't know what that amount will be, but we'll figure it out and start averaging kind of what we're spending each year. And also, the investments being made this year will help us understand the degree of need throughout the city. So if they're out there and everything's in great condition, the number that you need for small capital projects gets smaller. If they find more problems, then the number would go up. This fund does have a small reserve this year built in of $145,000, so just like IT and facilities and the internal service funds where we added a reserve, this fund has a small reserve. This could be used for small capital projects, but it also is sort of your rainy day fund in case something goes wrong and we need to fix it. The increased maintenance activities proposed by staff are being, they're going to be working on investigating, cleaning, and evaluating the drainage system. The development of small capital projects, they'll find these things while they're out there. The more you look, the more you find, sort of deal. Projects that are a result of the cleaning and investigations would be requested similar to how we come at mid-year and say, hey, we'd like $200,000 added to the streets and sidewalks budget, and here's why. That's sort of how we envision this coming forward is, hey, crews were out on, you know, such and such an intersection, there's a project for 145K, we've got fund balance over in the general fund, or, you know, we got money from wherever, we think this would be a good use, and council could approve that, get it into the amended budget. So it works similarly to the infrastructure reinvestment fund, like your streets and sidewalks. So these projects could include replacements of small lengths of broken pipe, manholes or inlet restorations, on-call repair services could fund the master drainage plan if we wanted to or needed to, as well as the property buyouts for areas of detention. And then large council, large capital projects, council has created a committee to evaluate a future bond referendum on drainage projects. These projects, it's been a collaborative process of projects identified by staff and utilizing various reports, the drainage plan, the Hurricane Harvey after-action drainage report, as well as city staff knowledge of, hey, we get a lot of calls in this area for drainage issues. There are 19 members of this committee as appointed by council. They're evaluating the system, they're prioritizing potential future projects, and again, these are your bigger capital projects. They're looking at partnership opportunities. They are, the idea is to have a referendum vote in May of FY23. The property tax impact would obviously, once we know the, how many projects and their potential cost, we could evaluate what the property tax impact would be of that, as well as provide formal recommendations to city council. We expect the Drainage Bond Advisory Committee to have their recommendations to council at the end of November. You can see here, there are a number of projects being evaluated by the bond committee. I'm not going to go through all of them, but it spans from wagon trail road to fight road, and I just wanted to give you the full list. And that concludes my presentation on special revenue funds. Open it up for questions.
All right, I think we're back to Owen's side of the table. All right. Maybe?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I don't know if I should call you mayor pro temp or whatever. Anyway, I don't want to offend Kevin, I'm sure he's watching, right? Anyway, I had a couple of questions. I think Member Coza mentioned the sidewalk fund. I mean, so is this the fund that we're going to use to be able to increase the robustness and aggressiveness of our sidewalks and updating and repairing our sidewalks across the city?
We've got that infrastructure fund, which is special revenue. I want to get back there real quick. Just to give you some flavor, that's an important one, too. I have one for that, that's where that sits. A million seven?
That's sidewalks and street repair money.
Okay. So what is this then?
So all of this we just talked about was drainage, drainage maintenance.
Oh, perfect.
Your baby, so.
So the next page. So I like the idea of, you know, cross-sectional, cross-divisional, or whatever organizational communication and funding across many organizations. Rusty Burkett with Galveston County Drainage reached out to me. He wanted, he asked specifically to speak to Robert or whatever and have a meeting with him. I mentioned that I would assist in facilitating that, but I think there's some passion there to be able to work with us along with us and BDD4 and whatnot. So that might be great. I know that you guys have worked with Harris County Flow Control in the past and have a great relationship there. So I think between those four organizations, we could really make a lot of headway and put some significant plans in place to deal with Clear Creek and other things. But specifically about the drainage fund, is this fund going to be used to also clear ditches and things of that sort? You mentioned that earlier in your presentation, right?
That is, this is going to be the place to identify and work from that. If I could, you know, you mentioned Galveston, and I think that's a great point, and Robert, you know, has a regular meetings with, you know, under the context of the Clear Creek because it's all connected and works together. And so you've already got good ties there, but maybe just half a second touch on that, please.
Sure, so on a quarterly basis, we meet with multiple jurisdictions with regards to the Clear Creek Watershed Subcommittee. That's been set up for many decades, actually, and it gets an opportunity for all of us to meet together and talk about where Clear Creek is, but also continue that relationship. So speaking with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District would be, setting up that meeting would be easy. But also remember, too, on that, Councilman Berry, is that almost 90% of our city falls within the Brazoria Drainage District 4 service area. So that's where a majority of our partnership is. So when we talk with Galveston County, it's talking a lot about being south of Dixie Farm, working with Clear Creek, et cetera, on that side. So we'll continue those conversations and see what's going on.
No, I understand that, and I think, I think the theory is, is if we have the water and we hold the water, it needs to go somewhere, right? We don't need it to back up into our jurisdiction. So I think it's still, you know, worthwhile conversation to have and see what's on his mind to further, you know, our relationship with them, even though it sounds like we have a good relationship. And earlier on in your presentation, you mentioned you're going to go to a 10-year cycle on some of these open ditch and covered drainage systems, but also mention the fact that you're just going to clean out to their original, the original size and, I guess, volume. Are there going to be any studies associated with those to determine whether or not they need to be expanded?
So, Councilman Berry, currently, right now, that's where the master drainage plan update would help us focus on. But due to the fact that currently we have a lack of attention and detail to maintenance of our enclosed pipe system, and also with our roadside ditch program only doing maybe five miles a year out of 135 miles of roadside ditch, this is the time to be able to at least get them back to original capacity that was designed at that time, and then that would help increase the flow and the removal of water. If there's continued areas of concern, then taking a look through the master drainage plan and then further detailed analysis at the local level would then be able to determine if we needed to expand or gain capacity.
Yeah, and I guess, I noticed that a lot of our troubled areas are already on the bond program that have been identified. So I think a lot of that's going to fix most of those issues, but, and I would assume during that time, you're going to do those studies to determine whether or not the size and of those drainage areas are sufficient or not.
Sure, associated with the bond program, those preliminary engineering reports that are being evaluated and are being submitted as they're starting to come in are looking at that high level. If they are selected and presented before the '23 bond referendum, then when they go into design, we'd be taking a look at current rainfall rates, how we need to improve them, and then how to take the look to remove water, and then also where the receiving water goes as well. Improvements to current rainfall data utilizing Atlas 14.
Okay, and so kind of back to our maintenance program, when do you guys think you might have an idea of what that maintenance program looks like as far as identifying the actual areas of the ditches that need to be cleaned out and so on? I would assume you'd start there since we don't have any camera system to look into the enclosed drainage areas.
Sure, so a couple of things to let you know on that process. As we presented in our last CIP update for drainage and transportation, we had put forth a program that staff has been developing of a 10-year cycle. That means they've broken the city into 10 equal divisions or 10 segments, and starting at year one tackling that segment, and that would be ditch cleaning and also enclosed pipe. So currently, at the beginning, as this process moves forward and council approves the staff as per that backing that you all did with resolution, is that our enclosed pipe crew would start off with our jet rod truck that we have, or Gapback, as it's also known, and start cleaning and those ditches with that crew. At the mid-year is when it's slated to then bring on the crew associated with the camera truck, the CCTV. But that equipment will be ordered of October 1 so that we can get it in the queue and get that equipment ordered. So when that equipment arrives, staff then arrives to be able to start that program and start cleaning, or I should say, camera inspecting the areas that we've been cleaning. And so then after that, we'll start inventorying and then probably take about a year. We'll probably look in in 2024's budget year, and then through maybe mid-year of 2024, we'd start seeing some life and some program of evaluating specifically enclosed pipe, where those issues are. With regards to roadside ditch, that program would start right off and just start with our on-call or our contract services and our dedicated staff.
I was just trying to get an idea of whether or not we could wrap our arms around what our annual outlay financially would be to maintain that 10-year maintenance cycle. And I guess we're still in the process of identifying what the issues are, and I guess we're going to have a priority level, just like we do on the CIP, I would guess. So I'm looking forward to seeing that information.
Councilman Berry, as items are identified, and then again, this is the first year of this program, so we're going to be learning a lot and learning that process and then moving forward with how that will look in subsequent future years as well.
I appreciate you guys moving quickly on this because it's important for our city to maintain our drainage and development for future progress and the existing citizens and businesses in the area. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Upton, on the drainage fund, I didn't hear Eric say anything about the cameras, but we did already get a camera system for the closed pipe inspections?
Actually, Councilwoman McCain, we actually have a VAC truck that is already on-site. With this being approved, at the beginning, then in October, we'll work with Fleet Department to then come before you to purchase the CCTV camera truck. We've been working on getting some quotes to understand what that cost is, that's how we built this budget, and if it's authorized, then we will move forward in October, coming before you, to purchase that equipment.
Okay, so we can avoid what our tree branch sculpture display we saw that night? And then, thank you. And then I have one other really random question. It's a small amount, I know, but the municipal channel fund? I want to, I guess my question about this is, where is this seen? Where is this municipal channel played? Channel 16?
Yeah, it's on Comcast and AT&amp;T, Uverse.
Yeah, television channel.
Channel 16 and what's the other one?
Channel 99 on Uverse, and then you have to select Pearland as the local pack channel.
Okay, but since more and more people are streaming and doing different things than that, is there another way? Could we put it on the internet for residents to see? Because I'm unable to see this channel. I stream everything, so I'm just curious.
So you could, we'll have to look at options if we can actually broadcast it out on, like our public website or something. I know we do do the agendas and council meetings, we have those on YouTube, so there is a YouTube channel.
Right.
But as far as other streaming services, that's, they're not part of, they have no requirement to have it, let's put it that way.
Is this possible, is this underutilized? Is this something, Josh, that we could use to communicate with residents more if we had this on our website? Or is that possible? That's all I'm asking, thank you.
Sure, so we do have the content on our website channeled through our YouTube channel, so there is a live stream of it that's a multicast of everything that we do, and that's worked for us relatively well. The tricky part that we get into is controlling the content, right? So whether it's a public meeting, anything that gets plugged into the comments would have to be recorded as part of the public meeting. One of the reasons we haven't done a simulcast on Facebook specifically for events like this, but we can do that through YouTube and manage all that that way. There are technologies that would allow us to look at things like Roku and other sorts of platforms, and we've had those conversations, we just haven't found the right solution to accomplish that yet.
Thank you.
Councilman Hernandez?
I like watching Josh emerge from his little cabinet back there and adjust to the light. These are great. This is kind of loosely related, but I'm really excited to see you're moving towards that 10-year maintenance program. And we discussed having our crews go out and identify potential issues or existing issues, but I think we've got a huge crew of people that are constantly out there looking for issues, whether it's with drainage or sidewalks or it is. I think that's our residents who are giving me feedback, and I'm sure giving my cohorts up here feedback on a constant basis, as well as our staff. One of the things that we've been talking about for a while is the integration of the Connect to Pearland app with these new systems that we've got, and it's my understanding that there are still some issues, maybe in specific departments where those requests are put in and they're immediately still closed out. What is the timeline on getting that all kind of zipped up and ready to go so that we're actually giving live updates as people are submitting requests if they see, you know, a blocked drain or chip sidewalk, something like that? Anyone can answer, I sense.
I think he's talking about the work order system, so Robert, you want to talk about, like, what we're doing with how we handle that when we have requests from the outside?
So, Councilman Hernandez, as requests come in, depending on how they are, information that is given to us, on how the resident would like to receive their communications, so we are working on that to make sure that that is seamless. As always, there's always ways to improve as we're continuing to begin, to continue to integrate CityWorks or that notification. integrate City Works or that notification system and then connecting and tying and working with Connect to Pearland. Early on, we did have some issues. We are still have resolved many of them. We may have a few nuances out there that we will, but again, following that up, I'll follow up some more information through City Manager's office and get you that as we continue to make that happen.
Cool, I just want to make sure that these reports coming through, and I appreciate that answer, are factored into this if we are setting aside money and building out this robust maintenance program that we're able to take the input from our residents and not have to rely solely on our crews, because I think the residents are a phenomenal resource of information from what's happening, different neighborhoods, streets, ditches, whatever it is, so.
Absolutely, absolutely, Councilman Hernandez. And as you talk to them, please realize is that they can call 1900-652-1900 or email 1900@pearlandtx.gov. And we get those and they can immediately create a service request that can transition to a work order with the information necessary to get ahold of them.
If I could just emphasize that, that 1900, we're really trying to make the hub and keep good, good record keeping and reporting back. And so encourage council and the public especially to, like you said, report eyes and ears, we need that, so that's helpful.
Councilman Camcar?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. You guys all know my drainage is like my favorite word, and I'm, I'm just tickled pink that we're creating this drainage fund. So thank you to the staff for identifying that and willing to be able to participate. I think there is a need. I think it's incredibly wise to put the small projects in those buckets, because sometimes there's a $200,000 project or $100,000 project and it doesn't need its own appropriation, just let's go do the project. I think that that's really tremendous and hopefully we will be able to do more out of it. I had a couple of questions, just kind of on what is the buckets feeding in? I think that's on slide 72. So this is, I'm glad Robert's at the mic. I know the second item was the resolution essentially at the mid-year that really spurred this going to appropriate that 662. What will be the ongoing, and I know that we're not in '24, '25, or '26, but what is the the thought process on the ongoing add-ins? Is that the way that this, these dollars have, are pumping in this fund?
So the way this would carry over, part of the $662,000 is going to a vehicle. It's a one-time purchase. Some of that will then go into lease fees, but a vehicle should last a good long while. I think the idea that we've been kicking around is the rest of that would stay within the drainage fund and just go into more repairs or maintenance, whether that's staff or contractuals, we would have to discuss. But we're not looking to to drop the commitment from 662 in the future. We, we keep it there.
Got it.
And then you could always build on it.
On the 1.3, is that gonna be a recurring appropriation from engineering and public works into that bucket?
Yes, it's gonna, you'll see it as a transfer. And really, the 1.3 and the 6,000 are squished together in future years, 600,000.
I had a question with, I remember we had our CDBG and ARPA discussion, I can't remember if it was two meetings ago, the last meeting, but I remember the point that was made is sometimes there's these small amounts that kind of get left over and they don't fit cleanly into a bucket. But there's not a project that's like an $18,000 project for the leftover amount. Can these work their way in there, Joel? Or how do we, how do we manage that? Because we do have some areas where I guess they're applicable, but we don't have a project of size and other areas where, how does, how do you think that works?
So we do have a small amount of unprogrammed dollars in our CDBG grant fund. Those would have to go to an infrastructure or facility improvement project. And if they were infrastructure-related, the applicable lines of service would have to fit into the geographic target area. So that would have to be in an area that right now for us is comprised of 45% or more LMI or low to moderate income. And it's often difficult to find a project that geographically fits in that area, but we could find something smaller that those dollars could go.
That LMI zone that qualified is in that middle north part of the city, in the central area, is that the one area that?
Yeah, so we're talking Garden Road to 35 and north of 518.
All right. And I only bring that up because I know we've talked about it and as many little things can trickle in here, money is fungible for us, but I would just be curious if we can put together a working memorandum on that, that if we, we are doing errant stuff in this area, as opposed to having it sit in the fund that it just never moves because we don't have it, that that would eventually make its way this way. I know that there's obviously some ties to it that we have to manage.
Sure, and there's also the future implications of the potential 14.8 million coming from the HGAC allocation from GLO. So we'll factor those and program those in as the hydraulics of this play out.
And then, Robert, the communications, we're gonna go from once every 30 years to one every 10 years for the rotation. You just, maybe I missed it, on the camera and the visual, are we buying equipment for that or is that something that we need to do in the days going forward?
So Councilman Camcar, with that is that our goal is to get to one time every 10 years, so breaking it into 10 different areas within the city. We have already purchased and have on hand, what is our backer truck or Gapback that cleans, have the hoses and clean. We need to still purchase our camera truck associated with that crew. So again, as mentioned earlier, would be to try and purchase that with the authorization right at October. With the way the funding to keep with the 662 allocation is the crew associated with that camera truck will arrive in April. And with the plan is hopefully it's at the same time as the camera truck arrives, and then that team will immediately go out.
Is there a rough number on that camera truck, this ballparking? Do we know?
I will have to get back on that. I want to say it's just south of, I think it's just south of 300,000. I want to say it's about 250 to 270, somewhere around that, I think.
Then my, my last item is if we ever wanted to get from the three times, from the 30 to 30-year cycle to the 10-year cycle to a five-year cycle or somewhere in between, is that, is that just a function of manpower more than anything else?
Manpower and equipment.
All right, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Member Camcar, I think Rachel had your answer on your camera trucks, we can cut out a memo.
Sorry, we have $260,000 budgeted for a camera truck in FY '23.
I'm overjoyed to appropriate that, so thank you.
Councilman Coza?
Yes, on the slide 72. So looks like we got roughly $2 million coming in. And Eric, you had mentioned of small projects, you'd thrown out at 200,000. Is that a threshold that is set or is that just something you just talked about?
In discussions with our friends in EPW and Finance and City Manager's Office, we were kicking out around small projects would be under $500,000. It's gonna be a while before the fund can regularly pay for those, but that's what we were thinking as the delineator.
Okay, so, so when it's fully funded, you'd be looking at half a million. But up until then, depending on the fund size, would kind of direct what small fund meant?
If I could add, the master drainage plan will give us that list and give us a lot better information about what to do with that. And just to be clear, too, that'll allow us to not only get them done more quickly, but without going into debt for those, because typically we've been caught between, we didn't have a place to do that. It was too much that we could get the money over, was too small really to try to debt bond for, didn't make sense, so now we can get after that.
Yeah, you just kind of bundled them all up and
Yeah, yeah.
Once every so often, you tackle them.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious to know kind of what the threshold was and what we're looking at.
Obviously, as you can tell, evolving work and we'll get our heads around it. All right, thank you.
All right, I'd just like to echo the comments that if you go back a slide, I mean, we're more than doubling the, the amount of staff and the drainage, so that's huge. One question I did have on the hot tax, we're budgeting a decrease in collections, lower than the 21, actual, lower than the 22 projected. I'm on page three of, of the special revenue tabs. I didn't know, or I guess what's the thought behind budgeting, continuing to decrease?
So frankly, I think it was hyper-conservative, too conservative. It's been staying real strong, as you've seen some other reports. And frankly, it doesn't really matter because it is what it is and comes in there. We don't have a big obligation there on that other side yet, so that's the poor logic behind it.
All right, well, I mean, let's, I don't know, let's get it right. And that's all I had, so I guess next up is component unit, i.e. PEDC?
Mayor, can I make one more clarif, I just want to make one more clarification. If I'm back on the drainage, this one, you knew exactly where I was going. I just want to make sure that we're, I'm clear on this. This is the first year that we've created this, this fund, right? So we don't necessarily really know what to expect from a, a funding mechanism or a funding amount on an annual basis, because we haven't really identified all the projects that need to get done. Is that, am I correct in that understanding?
I'll clarify and then Robert can add. We do know the revenues and expenditures, as you see here, because we're making a transfer from the general fund to take care of this. We're committing to add the staff and we will be able to make demonstrable improvements in inventorying and getting after some of the maintenance work. What we want to do and need to do next is for future, to start that master drainage plan so we can get that better inventory, that better plan, and then design a work program, really for future years, 24-plus kind of thing. So that makes sense? Or we know we'll be able to add and we'll be able to make very good, we'll make progress next year in '23 with this, no matter what.
Yeah, I would think that once the master drainage plan gets defined and understood, then if we have the manpower, it looks like we're, we're adding seven people to this group, that we would be able to make significant progress, or at least more progress than we're making now.
Right.
And at which point this, this plan or this, this number will increase.
Very, at least you'll know what we're not getting after, right? I mean, that's probably, and like we've kind of said in informal conversations with the people and with the additional resources, you know, there's areas that I'm sure the crews know that we can go and make some improvements on without, you know, necessarily the formal plan, but you know, but that'll be the obvious ones and then we'll be able to structure it better and prioritize better once we have that planned.
Yeah, we could get the softballs done early. So back to my earlier comments about, I see EDC is contributing $23,000, I appreciate that. But in order to alleviate the pressure on, on, on our MNO fund, you know where I'm going with this, right? Is there not a way that we can use the funding from EDC to offset in a cap level, per se, and then, you know, offset with MNO budget?
So MNO, these were, the 23 was just, is the easy ones for what PDC has constructed in the past and the maintenance of those, there's a formula for that. So that, that was the easy knockoff. I know it's not hardly any money, but with that master drainage plan, once again, and it's, it's a fact, that that'll also give us some areas for future additional capital projects that are relevant and appropriate for PDC to look at doing. So that's really important. And that master drainage plan is expensive, million, three, what'd you say, something like that? So that's significant for a third right off the bat. And we have to go back and ask PDC to amend their budget and formalize that, because this came up beforehand, after that, I'm sorry. So what, that, that's 400K right there.
What, when do we expect the master drainage plan to at least have the higher priority projects defined?
Councilman Berry, associated with that is dovetailing on what Mr. Pearson has stated is that, one is that it came up at the very end, we still have to have discussions internally, discussions with, for funding of that, of the city share, as he mentioned about PDC. And we need to sit down with Brazoria Drainage District Four and bring that up to them as we have not talked to them about that, to see, to have participation. So this came up towards the very last 11th hour of our discussions and as an opportunity when the Drainage Committee said that they did not want to.
So last plan, though, how long a cycle was that once we?
Did that in, was it about, about nine to nine months, nine to 12 months on that?
Did you get any interim reports that says, hey, here's some seven things that aren't going away, we need to get after that kind of thing, so?
So we would schedule all that associated with the engineering firm, the milestones along the way, critical features, and how that would run, and then get to finalization later, but see what we can do in the interim.
Can we at least get the, the list of what I would call obvious, obvious updates that need to be done?
I think you have, when we've put forth with our Hurricane Harvey After Assessment, some items that are associated with the master drainage and also staff knowledge and historical knowledge that staff has is what is set forth before the Drainage Committee that we have right now. And so this model would then take on to the next level of those areas that we have some knowledge of but haven't been as high priority, but then be able to look at conveyance as well.
For my, I guess for my application, would you mind recirculating that list? I know that we've talked about that, the master drainage plan, what, two months ago? Couple months, I think I saw a graphic on that through, in, in one of my either orientation meetings or, or something along those lines. And this is just for me being a new council member. I appreciate you taking an interest in that, I guess, but I'd really like to understand exactly what the toss-ups are, the softballs, or the obvious, obvious issues are, and go from there. And if one, one nine or two million's not enough, I mean, we need to re, you know, relook at that. I mean, reallocate where needed and then go from there. So I'm, I'm hoping that some of these drainage projects can be on the more immediate need versus the nine-month or 10-month cycle as defining, I guess, some of the larger projects, right?
Well, please remember also is that as we also ramp up our maintenance activities for that program, that'll change a lot of things, too, because we'll be returning ditches to at least their existing capacity. We have some out there that probably are 90% full.
Sure.
And so if we can restore those ditches to, or roadside ditches to full capacity plus cleaning out the culverts underneath the driveways or cross culverts across roads and get those fully cleaned out, there's a, there is a gain to benefit to the maintenance component.
Yeah.
Not just continual, because of just continuing to add more larger capital infrastructure, but maintenance is key. Once you build it, we need to maintain it.
Sure, not to beat a dead horse, I would like to get, you know, that list of projects that we have, we're currently undertaking this year from a maintenance standpoint, and just kind of keep an updated list on progress there. And I'm sure you already have that, maybe not in that format, but I'd love to see that on an ongoing basis. Thanks.
Member Berry, I want to defend the team real quick. As a member of the Drainage Committee, and the member Carbone was, and we went through the master drainage plan, that was, I guess, from 2018. And there's a list essentially bifurcated of like super-large capital projects, small to moderate capital projects, like over two and a half million, and essentially your large O and M 500 to 2.5, and then the lesser, the 500. And then when we started digging in with Raj and with Mr. Upton and the team, there's a list, probably each bucket probably has 15 or 20 different projects in different categories there. And the, the small O and M that I think you're talking about, what can we go do today, the toss-ups, the softballs, some of those, because those are worked together with BD4, some of those are in the BD4-only bucket, and then some of those are in the City of Pearland only bucket, since BD4 is responsible for being the receiving channel of the flows inside the city. And so I think the, the list that we have now is really a good starting point. But I think as we started to get deeper in, you'd go see a project that's on there that's $300,000, and it's like, well, this is like the farmer's irrigation line that we heard about from so-and-so, and we need to see to increase the capacity, and then it didn't hold the merit. I think that would be the beneficial result for moms, dads, families, businesses, where it's like if we go fix that 300,000, that will immediately go. And so I would, I would encourage that we have that list, but I think that there's an updating that is very needed. I would implore us as a staff and as a council to try to reach out to BD4 sooner than later to have that meeting, get that funding going, because it will take time. But I think the list we have is good, but I don't know that it is quite actionable or maybe as actionable as I would like it to be. And you know that I've, I have a zest on this thing that I want to go pursue. But that was kind of, in laying out the information that we got when we started digging in, some of those projects didn't stand up to as much scrutiny as, and rigor as it needed to be.
So now I hear you saying that once you started kind of peeling the onion back on some of those projects, it got to be a lot bigger than what you thought they might have been? Is that what happened?
Well, I think pricing-wise, it's bigger because we've gone from 2018 pricing to 2022 pricing. But I think if you said, where are the 10 projects that we can go do under 200,000? Some of those on the hierarchy of priority list were not, they're not having that result or they're not ready. or they're not ready with the PER completed. And therefore there, I just think that there needs to be another level of rigor. Those 19 projects that's on the drainage bond that's going to come up, it's going to have a full PER. We'll have full rigor on it. It will go. My biggest thing for us, I think as council members, is go into BD4 as quickly as possible with the staff and say, we would like to go fund these dollars to get this study going.
Yeah, I'm personally not putting a dollar, dollar number on the projects that I need. I think, you know, it's a, it's a very simplistic or naive way of looking at it. But, you know, oldest to newest works for me. So the older infrastructure that hasn't been touched in the, I guess, the 30 or 40 year timeline, let's take a look at those and start moving, moving on those if they're not already on the, the CIP or in the, the bond program. I mean, I think that makes sense. I don't, I don't know.
I just want to thank you for having as much of a zest as I think you do for drainage, and I appreciate you.
Appreciate you both. Let's move on to EDC.
All right, component units, AKA P E D C. So looking at their income statement here, miscellaneous revenue in FY '21 and '22 included $9.5 million for sale of property in Lower Kirby. So that's an important footnote of the revenues kind of differing per year for them. Transfers out to the city include 13.3 million for the Highway 288 corridor master improvements, 275,000 for rice dryer redevelopment, and 1.6 million for Lower Kirby drainage and utilities infrastructure for business areas. There is a direct business incentive of 1.2 million dollars, as well as capital outlay of 4.8 million dollars for Old Town Southeast Quadrant infrastructure improvements, and 475,000 for Smith Ranch Road Reconstruction Project for additional business area road and drainage infrastructure. You can see there are revenue for this year is estimated to be 15.3 million. Expenses are expected to be 10.2 million. As well as you can see, there are other financing sources here via transfers out, incentives, bond proceeds, et cetera. We expect them to end the year at 26.6 million dollars in fund balance. Do you love how short that was? Questions on P E D C?
All right, we'll start down with Member Coza. Questions, comments about EDC?
I guess my concern is on just kind of looking at the drainage information right there. $23,000 from P E D C while it's appreciated, I feel it's kind of on the small side. I would kind of be curious to know what, in these type projects, to kind of help the city along, you know, what could be the participation level from P E D C in that regard?
Well, that's got Matt to amplify, but keep in mind, because these are real dollars, whenever there's an infrastructure project done, there's a drainage component. So everything that's done in the rice dryer in that State Highway 35 corridor includes drainage, the Lower Kirby. So, you know, the two capital outlay and the transfers out includes significant capital drainage. And then, as we mentioned just a bit ago, again, that master drainage plan and getting that list, we can take a look and then get some additional ideas about more projects we can add for that. So, Matt, you want?
Yeah, I think that that sums up very well. You know, the EDC is not, I'd say, designed legally to do maintenance and operation. I'd say it's almost designed not to allow cities to use it for maintenance and operation and general fund purposes, I would say. So I think you got to think about that list that we just went over on the small and large projects. That's where the EDC is going to be able to be helpful in areas that are commercial. I'll give you one example, you know, like we did $130,000 in demo last year for the, for the code enforcement, because they're large projects, but if they're in a zone, commercial area, we can do those kinds of expenditures. So the 23,000 is generated from the projects we have done over the last 25 years. If the EDC has paid for the drainage component of a project, we can do the maintenance of projects that the board's approved. We can do that maintenance, and that's what that number comes to. But as like Mr. Pearson said, you know, if you look at the 4.8 million dollars for Old Town, well, 1.6 of that, I think, or 1.8 of that is drainage. So almost half that project, or, you know, 40% of that project is drainage. Of the 1.5, and Lower Kirby, I'd say of that 1.6, 1.3 is drainage. So we do have significant amount of money in our budget for drainage, but it can't help probably on the just straight going out and hiring six guys to go, you know, do television and clean out storm sewer lines.
Please, 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 I mean, like as Matt just said, don't, I know you're not, but the 23 is just a tiny piece. That's real money, that, that Old Town work, but for the PDC money. We wouldn't have had a way other than going into debt or do something, or defer it like it's been for the last 15, 20 years. Would not have happened for that 4.8, and Matt said that that's a million eight, you said, drainage piece of that? So that's a significant drainage infrastructure investment there.
Which I understand what you're saying, that, you know, you're guided by the law on what you can spend and what you can't spend in debt. But, I mean, you also talk about maintenance in there. Just to take a step back on the 35 corridor on the north side, where y'all did the beautification through there. If you take a drive down North 35, last time I did, there was about half the lights out. And so I don't know if that comes from a PDC or a city standpoint. But if we talk about Coles Flea Market being an eyesore coming into Pearland, I think it also hurts that we don't have lights on or half of them on when it could be lit.
It'd be Center Point that would be responsible for the lights, but we can definitely turn them in if there is lights out. Is it us? Oh, it is us. I'm sorry, it's not Center Point. They should be looking after it, though. They make the money off the power, so.
Thank you.
You know, I'm going to riff off there for a second. The 23,000 that's contributed, I'm exceedingly thankful, but compared to the, the budget of 26.62 million ending fund balance is like one tenth of 1%. And, you know, I, I hear, you know, we, we don't want to do general fund projects, but that 288 beautification project sounds like a general fund project to me. We can stretch and pull and move the interpretation of what we think is a, as a project, as a PDC project. But I'm, I'm generally not in favor of the PDC being in land development. And the PDC is being in land development, and we had an executive session less than a month ago, where the PDC proffered doing land development. And so I think we need to do more incentive. That third bullet, the direct business incentives, is 1.2 million is just beyond me too low. My opinion, I'm one person, I'm one vote, that's it. But I'm, I would be, I'm embarrassed that there's $26 million in, in the, in this budget when we be helping businesses, attracting businesses, or if we want to be doing general fund projects, even though we claim we don't, you could be doing some general fund projects that help underground. That's my comment.
So I'll add one more time that 23,000 is, we're doing millions of dollars of PDC drainage projects described here with Old Town.
Mr. City Manager, I would prefer that you not editorialize my comment.
I'm not editorializing, I'm just making a comment back, so.
I'm just going to reiterate for the sake of the discussion, since it's, it's my opportunity, that the $24,000 is literally one tenth of 1% of the existing projected ending fund balance.
Member Tim? So there, there's significant dollars in a variety of capital improvement projects that are identified here that include road, infrastructure, and drainage. I will add also that on the direct incentive side, those are purely direct incentives. We have never, and Matt can correct if I'm wrong, said that we could not do an incentive that met the requirements because we did not have enough money. We are, had the board and the staff are judicious, but go out and incentivize directly to private businesses, projects that meet criteria, that sign a contract for performance, but we've never said we couldn't do an incentive because we didn't have enough money.
I just, I just for the record, I want to notate that it was a critical comment from the previous council member, and those comments weren't editorialized. I just want that to be there for the record.
Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you, Member Tim. This is, don't read too much into this, Matt. I'm just from, just some independent study here. What is, for an economic development corporation in general, if we're looking out 10, 20 years from now, what is the projected lifespan of an EDC? Or do they just kind of persist alongside general government in perpetuity? I'm just kind of curious if we've got like a long-term plan here. Because it seems like there's a lot of back and forth on, we're spending money in these gray areas, things like that. Eventually, is there going to be a point where those gray areas just kind of turn into, well, okay, we just need this money for general spending?
Sure. Well, you know, communities have gone back since the beginning of time, working on their economies. And, you know, commerce is always changing and trying to react to commerce and to make sure that you have a robust economy. I mean, the reason we have the value that we're talking about here today and the increase in our tax base is because we have a, a good economy in our region and our community. So that's never going to go away, and your need as a council, when, as a board, to always be reacting to that economy and figuring out how to adjust our community and meet the needs is never going to end. You know, we have our strategic plan, which kind of sets out our priorities of what we want to do and, you know, everything. And our budget meets those, every single expenditure we have, we, you know, trace back to that strategic plan, that Pearland Prosperity Plan. Now, EDC is not doing all the Pearland Prosperity Plan, but many parts of it, you know, is an EDC responsibility. So as long as, I think, as a community, we have a strategic plan and we have, you know, objectives that we think we want to do. The law gives the community tremendous flexibility. I mean, it's never as much flexibility as we want. But as long as the city has capital projects, I think you're going to have a reason to have an EDC.
Okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, I just, I see the ending fund balance and kudos to y'all for, for having such a flush, I don't know what word I'm trying to look for, but, I mean, for being so positive in your ending fund balance. But is there any way to offer more incentives if, if, to that end?
Yeah, you know, it's not, I mean, if, if offering incentives to companies was all it was about, every community would be, you'd be doubling your budget of incentives in every state in the country. And if it was that, but it's not that easy, you know, you got, you got to do the whole picture. You got to have a place, you got to have sites and all those things. So just offering more incentives, I find communities that are extremely aggressive in incentives are usually the ones that are getting companies that they probably didn't want. You know, most of the companies that are the quality companies, incentives is a deal breaker maybe between one site and another site, but it's not what they're, you know, primarily motivated by.
Is the EDC allowed to offer incentives to businesses that look bad to clean them up? Or to change their facade or?
So we, our, the law requires us to give to primary employers. And it's got a series of NACs codes, and NACs codes is how businesses organize their national industry classification system. And so we can give to certain companies, but there usually has to be an investment and job growth in it.
Thank you so much.
Councilman Barry?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Matt, on the, this 26 million dollar revenue fund, I guess, fund balance, how much of that roughly do you already anticipate you have allocated for new projects?
You know, we have a five-year forecast, but obviously it's, you know, dependent upon the board and council in future years, you know, approving those projects. I always say that, you know, most all the major capital expenditures that we have in our budget this year, you've already considered and approved. But, you know, we have significant resources going forward in our budget for site development to continue to bring about sites that we can recruit businesses to in both the Lower Kirby and the 35 corridor. And then also, you know, we've got money in our five-year forecast for the potential of a hotel conference center and the potential of an indoor sports facility. And then, but, you know, we budget going forward usually around, average around $2 million a year for incentives. And so we've got that in our forecast. And then a big part of that 26 million dollar cash balance is the $10 million that we had from the sale of the CSI and the land around that. So that's why our cash balance has is, you know, almost, you know, 40% extra than we would normally have. But I always tell you, our budget's a capital budget, you know, the operations, our salaries is probably 4% of our budget, you know? So it's mostly a capital budget.
Yeah. So I guess one of the things I was, yeah, I constantly refer to the fact that I think EDC can assist in some of our, our streets and roads and drainage and stuff like that. It's just, just from the excerpt that I read from the Comptroller's website, it talks about type B sales tax may be used for a project eligible under type A, right? Which is obvious. And, and several other project types included quality of life improvements. They may pay for land, buildings, equipment, facilities, targeted infrastructure and improvements for, and it lists just a handful of things. And it says related street water and sewer facilities, affordable housing, store restaurants, professional amateur sports, that kind of stuff. So that's what I referred back to when, and maybe Lawrence and Darren can help out on the legalese there, because this is just more of a summary and a snapshot. There's probably more detail to it than that. But when I say that I want more EDC participation, I feel like EDC has affected a lot of projects across the city of Pearland. And they've done a great job of building that infrastructure and attracting and retaining good businesses in Pearland. But I do feel like EDC can participate a little bit more when it comes to directly affecting those projects around those project areas. So not necessarily those projects specifically, but adjacent, adjacent infrastructure needs that we may have. So industrial drive on, down 35 and things of that sort, where we may need some street improvements and things of that sort. We may need some drainage improvements in that area, because that is a traditionally low area. But that's just one project I can think of off the top of my head. So I, I agree, or I feel like what we could do is overlay the EDC projects across the city of Pearland and expand outward on those projects to directly affect those projects. So if, if that makes sense to you. So I'm not necessarily trying to get you out of your box. I just, but I want, I want you to help. I want, I would prefer to see you guys have a significant participation in those areas, and the drainage plan is a, is a big part of that. So once that drainage plan is updated, or even the one that we have today, maybe we can sit down and take a look at that and understand how y'all can directly affect some of those things with some of the cash balance you have in, in the, in the EDC today. Is that reasonable?
Definitely. And I, and I think if you look through the 25-year history of the corporation, if you look at 518, you look at 35, you look at Lower Kirby, 288 area, that's where we've spent our money in the commercial and business areas of the community, improving water, sanitary roads and, and drainage. That's where the majority of them. We, we built the Bailey Bridge, we built the McCard Bridge, you know? We just did the Rice Dryer Halleck and improved all the drains to Old Town Ditch. So, I mean, that is what the corporation, and then obviously Lower Kirby. That's what the corporation has been doing throughout its history and taking that burden off the city and the, and the tax, property tax base, having to fund those projects.
And there's no question that's added significant tax value to the property taxes, city and revenue and whatnot. So that's, that's neither here nor there, and I'm not trying to condemn the EDC at all. I'm just trying to figure out how to reduce the long-term burden on the maintenance and operations budget of the city. And I'm hoping that EDC can, can help alleviate some of that pressure on that, on the general fund.
If it's those small capital projects, the large capital projects, as long as they're capital projects and those, and they meet that 501, 303, 501, 103 category, yes, we can do those all day.
Councilman Owens? You good? All right. I guess questions I had to kind of chime in to everybody is, thanks for the 23K and everything else. We were spending, what, 600, proposed to spend 685,000 of EDC funds for entryway and corridor maintenance. But if the streets are flooded when somebody's trying to tour the town, that's still going to look bad. So I guess if, if we look at that 23K, that seems low. And I give, and by no means are, am I saying get outside the box, but we got that outside the box to mow the grass for 685,000, so let's open it up a little bit. If we're talking corridors, I've got to think that we're going to spend more on maintenance for the, just the primary corridors that the EDC has worked on, more than 23K. I'd appreciate some more follow-up. I think there's a consensus up here to, to dig into that a little bit harder and see what we can do to get, I would, I would like to see more allocation to the drainage fund from the EDC specifically. And with some nods of heads, I'd say there's a consensus. And with that, we'll move forward to the Enterprise Fund, last but not least.
All right, Enterprise Fund. Let's get into it. So the Enterprise Fund has two main funds. It has an operating fund and a debt fund. The Enterprise Operating The enterprise operating fund, it basically pays for all of the operations. So your waters, your water ground, water and sewer plant grounds, your lift stations, clean water treatment and distribution, water meter services, electricity, personnel, any sort of overhead costs for the water and sewer systems such as IT support, admin support, finance support. This is where the bulk of the work getting done gets paid for. The enterprise debt fund, on the other hand, this, just like in the general fund, you have a tax-backed debt fund. You have an enterprise debt fund that is paid for out of the enterprise operating fund. So each year there's a transfer from the operating fund to the debt fund. And the, this importantly, the enterprise debt fund, these debt payments are fixed. They're not, they're not optional, they're not flexible. Whereas the other one is an operational decision. It's useful to look at both funds combined to get an idea of what are we spending enterprise fund money on. So what I did is I combined them for this chart. And you can see the bulk of expenditures are principal and interest. So FY '22, $26.2 million or 41% of the budget in the enterprise system. So I'm not counting the solid waste fund. We're just talking water and sewer fund here. I went to principal and interest. In FY '23, that increases by over $3 million to 29.9% or 42% of the combined budget. Just for comparison sake, in FY '18, that number was 17.3 million. What's driving this? We'll get to it. But going from 17.3 million to 29.9 million in principal and interest reflect the capital improvements that are being made. You can also see that things like salaries and wages have stayed relatively even over time, but about 17% of the budget between both years. And we can explain the additional personnel that are being requested, which make up that 0.8. Everything else is a fairly small portion of the enterprise fund budget. So what is driving enterprise debt on expenditure growth in the system? Because when you look at the enterprise system and we're talking about rates, you got to talk about, well, where's most of that money going? There are a lot of capital improvements going on in the city. These are necessary, needed and valuable capital improvements. So the surface water treatment plant is a $175.5 million project that is scheduled to go operational in FY '23. JHEC water reclamation facility expansion is an $80.6 million project. The Bailey Water Plant improvements are $14.4 million. The Berry Rose Water Reclamation Facility replacement and expansion is $228.4 million. And the Longwood Water Reclamation Facility decommissioning is $36.2 million. Again, these are all needed and necessary projects as approved by city council. So these, these projects and the associated debt costs are not a surprise. They've been in the CIP for years. They, all the projects and the debt issuances have been authorized by previous city councils, members of this city council. There are multiple check-in points for those authorizations in the amount such as CIP adoption, during the intent to reimburse, during the authorization to sell debt process, and finally a debt issuance. The projects have been built into the rate model, at least since I've been here. The rate increases are not reactionary. They were always going to be needed to pay for these projects. I think everyone conceptually understands if you're building a $175 million project and you're bonding out for it, you gotta, you gotta pay back the bonds at some point. And we always make sure to include these costs in the CIP and multi-year projections. Just to note that sometimes when these projects are completed, the bigger ones, there might be an O and M impact. So like, hey, we're completing waters, a water treatment plant, probably going to need some staff. That's what we call an O and M impact. So a capital project being completed, if we need to add staff to run a plant, that O and M impact then becomes kind of a permanent budget item. The major project this year in the enterprise fund is the surface water treatment plant coming online. What we did over here is on this slide, in the green, you see the major project milestones as they are scanned today, as well as a hiring timeline. The project milestones are of course subject to market and logistics delays. And you've seen how they can move around a little bit on the, the regular updates given to council. And then the FY '23 staff that are here for the surface water plant, we are not budgeting for them for the full year. We are budgeting for them as they come on. So that cost savings has already been built in. The cost of adding these staff is $396,658 plus one-time startup cost. The ongoing cost for this staff will be about $501,000 next year. So in October, the plant will begin pre-treatment and raw water intake to the pumps. We will, and also in October, we will be hiring a plant mechanic and a plant electrician. And in December, the plant will hit a new milestone where they will begin membrane testing of clean water. This process takes about three months to complete. In January, you see that we're adding a plant mechanic, an operator two, two operator ones, and a laboratory technician. Then in February, the plant begins using raw water to run membranes, disinfection systems and high-service pumps. Those are the pumps that send water out of the plant. Then in April, the plant begins full system testing with TCEQ. This will take about three months to complete. In April as well, we are hiring an operator one and an operator two. And then in June, the plant will begin sending water into the system. So you can see here how as we hit milestones, we're bringing on people as needed. These are the, the people needed to run the plant. Another new addition to the enterprise fund this year is the water quality compliance team. This team will be responsible for water compliance sampling, monitoring of disinfection residuals and flushing of the water distribution system. The city is required to collect water quality samples on a regular basis. This sampling is going to increase by 20% in FY '23 from 100 samples per month to 120 samples per month. And this is because our population has grown over 130,000. And TCEQ is the one who determines whether you're over 130,000. The water system contains about 1,000 flushing points, sorry, over 1,000 flushing points per month. And as new development comes online, the number of flushing points increases. We're a city that's still growing, so we expect this to continue growing as well. This crew, the water quality compliance team, will assist in maintaining the current workload and is critical to providing the current level of service. So if we want to keep our current service levels as are, we need to add this crew. The water quality compliance team will also be responsible for operations that are critical, sorry, for these operations and are critical to responding to customer water quality service requests in a timely manner. So if people call up and say, hey, there's an issue with my water and we need to send people out, these are the people we send. The current response time for customer inquiries is about an hour. The responses to calls for water, you know, they respond to things, calls for water qualities. Staff will go out, will run tests, flush lines, will work with residents and then close out the service requests successfully. They also respond to low-flow reports. Currently, that's about a one-hour response time. Staff run tests and work with residents to determine the cause of these low-flow reports. The cost of adding this team is $262,000 and it is four new FTEs in the enterprise operating fund. Let's talk revenue. In a given year, the city must bring in enough money to pay for debt. That is legally required. And also pay for operations because at the end of the day, this, this system is about producing water and treating wastewater. And that's not something that you can just decide to stop doing altogether. Increased consumption does help to some extent, right? So the drought is driving increased consumption right now. That also has some implications for where we get our water and the cost associated with that. But it also implies that, you know, as the city continues to grow, that'll bring in more revenue just by having a larger customer base. However, rate increases are the main way for cities to bring in the necessary enterprise fund revenue to play, pay for capital projects. When we, there are two really important numbers to know. When we sell debt, the city agrees legally that we will have a bond coverage ratio of 1.15. And I'll explain what that means in a slide later. And then we have an operating fund balance requirement of 15%. That was recently adjusted down and right-sized. However, we do not want to go below the 15%. That is your rainy day fund. So we are proposing a rate increase that would mean an average household in Pearland, which uses about 6,000 gallons of water per month, it will pay about $7.50 more a month. That's, that's what it means in terms of the average household's pocketbook. This is an area where the percentages can, you can view them and it can be like, hey, that's a lot. Or hey, what does that mean? And that's why I'm saying the dollar cost first. This is important just to know it's $7.50 a month. There is a complicating factor that I want to make sure everyone's aware of, which is we are going from 32 days to 30 or 31 days on a bill, right? So we're winding down 32-30 plan. So when a customer gets a bill, they'll have fewer days on their bill. If they're using the same amount of water, it does not mean they're going to see a 13.1% increase in their rate. We think it'll be about, they'll see about a nine and a half percent increase for a typical household. Just because there's fewer days on their bill. There's less usage on each bill because of fewer days. Quick review of the history of rate increases in Pearland. You can see, you know, we had a few back in 2007 through 2009. We had a stretch of years where there were no rate increases. We went through sort of a capital replacement cycle here. And now we're going through another capital replacement cycle here. Council has been clear that long-term, they want to see this sort of leveled out more. And long-term, that's certainly the goal. But what does 13.1% rate increase mean to the real world, to businesses, to different types of consumers? This is a really helpful table because it shows how we calculate these costs and how we estimate them. So a customer's bill is based off two things, their, or three things, their type of account, their usage and their meter size. So here we've broken out several examples. Residents are up top with different levels of consumption. And you can see what the water side of the increase would be here in this blue box over here. In the green box, you can see the sewer side of the increase. And then on the right, you can see what the increase total would be. So again, 6,000, 6,000 gallons is pretty close to average for a residential household in Pearland. So it's going to be about a $7.53 increase. And because we're going from 32 days on a bill to 30 or 31, it works out to about a 9.5% increase in their bill or $7.53. Down here, we also offer some small office, commercial, fast food and sit-down restaurants. You can see that these use a lot more water as you would expect. So with that comes larger bills. But again, you see the same thing, going from 32 days to 30 or 31 days. The bill amount isn't increasing by 13, 1.1%. So here we have some comparisons. Here we have some comparisons of residential households and where our bills are at. This is currently where the city of Pearland is at. And this is where the proposed rate would be for that 6,000 gallon typical household in Pearland. You can see Conroe in Houston are higher, Friendswood is just a little bit lower. On the commercial side, due to our rate structure, you see that we are on the right side of this chart above Sugar Land. What is driving this rate increase? So let's look at both of the funds. In FY '23, the proposed budget for the enterprise operating fund is $63.8 million. This fund budget is a $170,000 decrease from FY '22's adopted budget of $64 million. So even though we're adding staff, because of the changes we've implemented over the course of last year in conjunction with council, we're actually seeing a $170,000 decrease there. And this does contain the transfer out to the debt fund. The, and this was primarily accomplished by switching from water and sewer COs, water and sewer revenue bonds to COs. The debt fund, this expenditures in this fund are paid for via that transfer from the enterprise operating fund. This is a $3.7 million increase from the FY '22 adopted budget of $26.3 million. So that's where the increase is, is over in the debt fund. So when we build projects, right, we're going to have to pay that debt back. These capital projects are necessary, they're required. They will expand the supply of water to meet current and future demands. They expand and renew our wastewater treatment capacity to meet state capacity requirements for current and future flows. They maintain the existing system to, and supply of water and treat wastewater for our residents and businesses. They keep our water supply safe and high quality. And they ensure that state and federal regulations are followed. These projects are some of the largest in the city's history. They set the city up for long-term success and they decrease our reliance on Houston for drinking water by providing Pearland control of its own water production. These large investments are required to meet council's strategic priority of sustainable, well-planned infrastructure that provides long-term community value in a growing city. I wanted to cover all the options that we've taken to try and decrease pressure on our customers and our residents and businesses. So in FY '22, at the request of council, we staggered the hiring. So instead of hiring them of our employees in FY '22 that were new employees on October 1st, we hired them later on in the year. We've also been very careful and given continual oversight to the FY '22 budget. You've seen that in the variance reports. We have switched from water and sewer revenue bonds to certificates of obligation, which has a lower bond coverage ratio requirement and also does not require you to take a millions of dollars in some cases and lock them up in the debt service fund where you can't spend them for the life of the debt. We have moved to structured debt. The council has approved the right sizing of reserve requirements in the enterprise operating fund and the enterprise debt fund. We had had the old kind of requirements. And then when we went to two new funds, we worked with council to say, hey, what's the, what should our reserves actually be? And now we have those in place. We have had clear communication to council regarding the FY '23 CIP and its impact on rates. I think this is the first year we brought the CIP forward and were able to say, here's the CIP, here's the projects, here's what they're going to cost, and here's what utility rates will look like. And I, I think that's an important improvement. We should note that that's the type of discussion we like to have. We also reworked the FY '23 CIP to lower pressure in FY '24 through FY '27 under council's guidance. We have updated revenue and expenditure projections for the first week of August. So typically, we would make these revenue projections in the spring and stick with them. But due to the drought, we know that we're bringing a little bit more revenue right now because people are watering their bonds and plants more. And we wanted to capture that and see how it plays out and make sure that, you know, our, our estimates are as accurate as possible to the reality that we're seeing. Droughts don't last forever. So we're not assuming it's going to last, but we wanted to at least capture the revenue that we have made over the summer. And again, in FY '23, we have staggered the hiring of FTEs, as you saw in the surface water plant, to bring them on as they're needed. And of course, on an ongoing basis, we are going to continue to have discussions on utility rates. We will continue to build trust through transparency. Last time we were here, council suggested that staff work with an outside firm to, hey, you know, we brought the, the rate model in-house. Let's have an outside firm validate that it's working. And if there's any areas for improvements, I think that's a great idea. And we're signing the contract for that this coming week. And we're going to turn that around real quick, I hope. And at the end of the day, hopefully it validates what we're saying. And if there's improvements that need to be made, great. Anything to build public trust in the rate model. So earlier I teased this 1.15 bond coverage ratio. This is something we agree to when we sell debt. This is calculated using the formula of revenue minus operating expenses over your current debt obligations. You can see here the math. We are bringing in just enough revenue to meet this 1.15. So we're not asking for extra. We're bringing in right on the minimum to meet this requirement. Subtracting our $35.3 million in operating expenses divided by $27 million in current debt obligations. This number down here, just note, is fixed. This is money, there's payment schedules. We can't really affect that. So what does Pearland need to do to meet its enterprise operating fund reserve requirement? So this is a city policy. We will meet this, this year. This is not the driving metric for this year. So reserves are projected to decrease to 34% by the end of FY '23. The policy is 15%. Any revenue increase lower than 13.1% will increase the amount of reserves used in FY '23. In FY '24, the ending fund balance is projected to decrease to 16%, so about 1% above the fund, reserve requirement. In FY '25, reserves will decrease to the recommended fund balance of FY '15. So we've built, or sorry, balance of 15%. So we've built the rate model to take us down to the reserve policy, but not go below it. it. Once reserves hit 15%, we're not going to do any additional withdrawals. That is a true rainy day fund at that point. And the enterprise fund's revenue stream will need to be sufficient to pay for both operations and debt service. Looking at our revenue picture, we are expecting about $51.3 million in FY '22. Revenue in water and sewer sales, heavily dependent and driven on the weather. Can't forecast the weather a year out in advance, so you kind of work with averages. So you always see a little bit of swings here and there. With the 13.1% rate increase, that'll increase to $59.5 million. On the expenditure side of things, the budget is going in the Enterprise Operating Fund from $57.6 million to $63.8 million. This is a decrease from the adopted budget of last year. And then the revenue expense gap is expected to be about $4.3 million, where we will use reserves. This impacts rates as well in a positive way, and that's why the model uses them over time. Looking at the Enterprise Debt Fund's income statement, here you can see the main line are these increasing debt payments. So you have $23.6 million, 26 to $26.281 million, and at the end of FY '22 is what we're projecting, up to $29.9. So again, this is money that has gone towards those capital projects, this is repaying that debt. We expect the fund balance to end at about $18.1 million in cash equivalents. Of this, 15.7 is reserved for debt service, and then the bond coverage ratio will be With that, I'll turn it back to council for questions.
All right, we'll start with Councilman Owens. All right, Councilman Barry.
So on page 108, I just wanted to ask a question. You may have already covered this. Sorry, I missed it. Maybe it's a previous page. Can't really see the difference. So anyway, in there, they were talking about, this is not the right page either, one of the actual, the administration part doubled, almost doubled, about $2 million, or is more than double of the, yeah, there you go, go back.
This page?
Perfecto, yeah. So here, I noticed that the actual administration part of this went up from 1.3 to 3.9 in expenditure. What was that about?
I believe that is the IT transfer, my team is telling me.
IT transfer?
Yeah. So the IT transfer shows up in the administration division of each.
I got you. But it's offset in the other department, right?
It's not an offset.
From last year?
Yes, yeah, that's, it's up, removing it from one place to another.
I got you. Okay, so that shows a little disparity there. Okay, and that's a predominant part of it. And the customer services went up a million dollars, can you explain that a little bit?
Yes, that's some part of the IT transfer and some minor staff realignment. There are four staff members for meter services that will now be charged to utility billing going forward in 2023. Additionally, there are some AMI endpoints for about between 100 and 160,000 that'll be reflected in the budget next year.
So staffing primarily, and some IT. That's all I've got.
Just the 13.1% seems to place an unfair burden on the businesses.
That's my only observation. I don't know how to offset that. If you can go look at that slide.
Is that in here?
No, I guess this one, I mean, I know they use more water, but that's, I mean, that's a big increase. Some of these places are not, are struggling anyway. That's going to be a big increase. That's, I have a hard time with that. That's my only observation, thank you.
Councilman Campcar.
The most loaded topic for the end. Can we go to the slides 102? By the way, I want to compliment the team. I very much enjoyed this deck, and they did a great job on it. The key items are pointed out. I think it's very important that what are we paying for, which is all of the different, the J-hack, this plant, or that plant. I think it is very important to illustrate, you know, safe water, drinkable water is important. I think we all learned that last year with Winter Storm Yuri, when we couldn't drink water for a period of time. And so I think it's exceptionally important that we point out, this is a public safety item in a certain context. So I think it's the one with the equation on it, Eric, I screwed it, 105, I'm sorry, I, smaller view. So I just want to understand conceptually. I found the 27 million in the deck, the slide deck, and that, that isn't moving. Like you said, that's set in a rate schedule, and that, that number is pay me. Bondholders need to be paid. The items on the above piece are the ones that can be moved, whether we add revenues or take away expenses, but those are the pieces that we essentially have control over, if that makes sense, right? So is the 66, the 13.1 feeds into that 16.6 number. So if we approve that rate, that will generate that amount of revenue for the discussion. All right, I just want to point out, and I'm on Enterprise Page Fund, Enterprise Fund Page 1, and I'm struggling here, and I want to make sure I'm getting it. On that particular page, I see 59.5 million in revenues across the six or seven categories. I'm going to filibuster until you guys get it on your thing. The sale of water, sewer revenues, other service charges, investments, other miscellaneous, transfers in, and other financing. I see the 59.5 on this book, I'm not disputing the 59.5, but I'm not seeing the 66. Can you help me close the gap on where I'm missing the other piece on that?
Well, Rachel, why don't you chime in on that, please?
Councilman Campcar, what makeup of that $66 million is the 59 that you see in the Enterprise Fund and another $6 million come from impact fee?
So somebody builds something new, and it is dollars into the system to pay capital contribution or capital. Where is that? Where are those impact fees in this bucket of stuff?
So the impact fee, the revenue is in Fund 550 Series, and the transfer in actually show up in Fund 601.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to take your word for it, because I don't have it on this book.
You should have it on 601, sorry.
Okay. I don't know where that is, I'm going to keep this going. And then really quickly, the operating expenses number, I'm not seeing the clear delineation where we're giving the 35.3 on the operating. Can somebody point that me in the right direction?
Well, could you give kind of an overview of what the operating expenses are and what they're not?
Yes, sir. The operating expense does not, is every expense, that doesn't include mud rebate, cash funded CIPs, debt service, and non-operating transfers.
I just, I want to say this, I see the bottom number, number 27 on this book on page 6, very clearly. I don't see the other ones very clearly. And so I just, this is for us being process-oriented and making the next one better. This is, this equation is essentially driving the water rate increase. We need to be able to detect the 66.3 and the 35.3 as clear as day. I know it may be in some different buckets, but just for process, it's helpful.
Sure. Can I get that to you in a write-up as well?
That works for me, and I'm good. I just want to talk about that formula for a second, because that's clearly what's the driver. I'd like to talk to Robert just a little bit, because I, the discussion that we're having around operating expenses, as you guys have pointed out in the earlier slides, is we're staggering employees online, like in slide 95. And I guess the question that I have is, at the end of the day, how many people do we need? When we turn the water on, I want to say it's in October, if I'm remembering our discussions, we're going to be sending water in there in June or July of next year, and then getting it up and running. But what is our operating this facility cost at the end, just in terms of personnel and then actual equipment? Because I feel like, you know, that's the biggest driver. Obviously, the debt payments on this are going to be its own thing for the surface water plant, but what's the big driver on personnel?
So this is, Councilman Campcar, thank you for the question. What you have presented before you, plus the four staff members that we have existing, which would be our surface water plant manager, our process operator, instrumentation tech, and our maintenance manager coordinator. That and these, and these individuals here comprise of what our staffing plan was done when the plant was conceived, and working through that to what it takes to operate this plant. This is what we need. One, two, three, four. I'm just doing math real quick, two, four, 10, 11, 12, 12 to 13 staff members I can do right off the top of my head.
I don't know how to operate this thing. Are those 12 people 100% dedicated, or are they going to be split amongst other functions and other facilities?
So with regards to the operators themselves, they are 100% to the surface water treatment plant. The plant mechanics, electricians, and our instrumentation individual, that group is starting out at the surface water plant, but then also working when our water and wastewater plants outside of that surface water plant be able to augment and help with maintenance, being proactive, and starting to become a proactive to our maintenance of our system and developing those plans. So it will be spread out among our other plants, those individuals.
So you gave me a great answer, I just want to encapsulate it and distill it down. So all of these operators, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, are going to stay at that plant way over there on the west side of town. And then the plant, if you have a word, plant or laboratory tech, you are going to be split amongst other facilities.
The laboratory tech will be at the plant, that is there for that compliance. But with regards to the mechanics and the electricians, we are starting them at the surface water plant, but then bringing them to our wastewater plants and our water production facilities for wells to also augment and begin a proactive maintenance program at each of those sites.
And then how many folks are in our, I'm assuming everybody that works in water or wastewater ends up in the operating expense calculation? How many, what is the head count on that group, roughly speaking, Robert?
I'll put the swag at currently probably right around 80 plus or minus, but.
80?
Eight zero.
Okay.
And that also includes our crews that are in distribution and collection, that are out repairing waterline breaks, maintaining the system out in the field.
Okay. Let me ask you a question. Is the, can I talk about the TCEQ thing here, is this the appropriate venue? Do we have a cost on what that, that is projected at now? Do we know how much we're on the tab for that?
TCEQ question is very broad, could you narrow that down, what you're asking specifically?
The issues involving the discharges that the city put out the website, saying that they had issues on exceedances?
So with regards to, if you're regarding to the wastewater discussion that we've talked about, that issue is being worked on right now. We have received a TCEQ's document that we have, are currently evaluating and looking at to determine what that fee will be associated with that particular.
And where I'm getting at is, what is the cost? Because I'm assuming that's being borne out of operating expenses, it's not a general fund item, I was told it's not a general fund item. So I'm just curious, what is the amount that we're budgeting this year between staff, personnel, fine, fee, legal, to address that?
A lot of those costs, and with regards to legal, have already been incurred, have been set aside as the existing purchase order. The only cost that we have potentially budgeted for would be if there is any fines associated with that.
So the BRA contractors?
That has already been encumbered as a purchase order for this year. It has not, will not transfer over, as the plan, not to transfer over to.
Whenever this FY is over, which is coming up here quickly, you're not going to have a contract for that. There won't be a need, is that what you're saying?
There won't be, that is, that is correct. There won't be a need for that service.
All right, well, I would tell you this, I'm going to get to one general thought, but the water quality team being arisen out of this issue, the water compliance team, the 378, I have a ton of heartburn about this.
That is actually two separate items, Councilman Campcar. That is not.
It is the, is the preface being TCEQ requirements, is it being born out of this issue that is occurring?
No.
Has it occurred?
No. Not at all. It's for the water operations. You have wastewater and you have.
So you're telling that none of these items is being used to remedy the issue that we have with TCEQ compliance?
100%. 100% no.
All right, I'm, for the record, I'm hearing this, I'm accepting it's on its face, I am casting a lot of doubt on that, it just feels out of that. I would tell you, this water compliance team feels like the do-your-job team, and that should not be an additional $400,000 for water compliance. The expectation between the 80 members that are on the staff is that they should be working on water compliance as part of their job. That's real money, to the point that member Cade made, 13.1 is a lot of money. That rate increase, the $7, as pointed out, I'm glad it's only seven a month, but that's $90 on the res piece, the businesses, it's an even bigger item. Adding people for water compliance, our water between the 80 staff members should be in good order. And I'm going to have a lot of agitation around that, and I'm just saying that straight away, no other way around it. I am appreciative that the items around the exceedances with the TCEQ that we've recently discussed are not in this budget. We'll see if those contracts come up again. You're telling me they're not, I'm going to respect on its face what you've said. I would ask to the body that we ask for a proposal, and hopefully we can get that, what it would be to bring in private water and wastewater operators. I'm very aware of what the plant is, it is something that is kind of bespoke and we're doing, but we've got a large head count. I would at least want to know, being apples to apples, if we privatize some of that, we would pay for hourly, we would pay for cost incurred, but we would not be paying FICA's, we would not be paying COLAs, we would not be paying all of the other benefits. I think it behooves us, this 13.1% number, that's just this year they're projecting. Next year, probably be an increase, maybe, you know, it's getting bigger, it's not getting smaller. We should have all options on the table, at least so we can make an informed decision. I got yelled at, literally earlier this week, about the auditorium, and if we looked at an option to privatize, and then lo and behold, a few days later, the Pearland ISD says, actually, we don't want to be 50/50, we don't have the ability to be 50/50, and we don't want to. We should at least look at the option of if we were going to privatize this, what it would cost. At least have the discussion. If we don't want to go there, let's not go there. But at least let's have the data on the table, and at least have a proposal from somebody and decide is that good or bad. The plant is going to have five dedicated operators, from what the city engineers telling us, by itself. So I just throwing this out there, we're going to have to deal with the 13.1% increase this year, and then we're going to have to deal with more later, and these operating expenses don't seem to be going down. So my only other advice to the team was, let's find somewhere to sell water, if that's Manville or somewhere else. The only other part of this equation is adding revenue. I don't have any other, there are those two pieces that we get to wiggle, expenses and revenue. So that's all I got.
Councilman Coza?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Robert, Eric, I don't know which way this will go, but with the staffing coming on for the water treatment plant, looking at it, I'm assuming these are all going to be new folks coming in, and from that, with our last debacle in our water department, do we have enough money to cover training, to make sure that they're up to speed, that we're not going to have any issues like we had in our wastewater?
With that, Councilman Coza, with regards to that, we do have budgeted in there to have continual training. They are required as licensed operators to maintain their level of certification. That is 30 hours over three years. So we do allot the time for them to be able to do that. There are also free courses that we also host and look to. We also provide, bringing in TECS, the extension from Texas A&amp;M, to help prevent or provide some classwork, but make sure that they get their classwork and also. some classwork, but make sure that they get their classwork and also their ability to take their tests. So we do provide that. Would always love to be able to increase, just like everybody else here in every other department, to be able to increase those training opportunities. But we are frugal and we make sure that we do get the return on investment.
Okay, as far as that, I'm assuming that we had that in our wastewater as well, did we not? Because we had licensed operators there, but yet for some reason we had a major catastrophe, in my opinion, for the shenanigans that were going on in that area.
We do have training in both.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, quick question. Earlier, we'd mentioned about reallocating four staff to utility billing. Can you expound on that a little? And then I guess bottom line, address the Raftellus report that says we're one of the most inefficient cities around, and now we're adding four more staff?
Councilman, these are four staff that were existing in EPW, and we just moved them over to utility billing. So they're the ones that go out and meet with customers on site when there's an issue with their meter, they pull the meters, get them tested. It's been a good program for us, I believe that was one of the recommendations from Raftellus, was to move those technicians over.
They have nothing to do with the billing side, it's what they were and are doing for meter maintenance, installs, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, so we're moving them from one department to another, that they're still doing the same job. Okay, all right. And, yeah, I mean, at some point, we do need to address, we keep throwing dollars at technology, I know we're working through technology, but it seems like there's, there's still some inefficiencies there. I hope on the back end of the AMI implementation, we've got some savings. I don't remember the last time we saw a negative in, in the staff outline showing that we don't need to replace some positions. Other question, fees are in here, is that going to be at the next budget meeting?
Yeah, I think we've, I can't remember if we've highlighted those at this meeting or not, but we'll add it as a separate, give you some space to talk about that next time.
All right.
I just want to add one thing, Mayor. Robert, correct if wrong, that, just for clarity for everybody, the water compliance team is but for the new surface water plant, that would not exist, is that correct? I mean, that's what I understood, so.
So there's a couple of things with that. Mr. Pearson, thank you for the opportunity to clarify. So the water quality team is actually set up to take our water quality sampling. So currently, we are, as per TCQ, it goes by population, we only collect 100 samples per month, that is testing throughout the system. Plus, we have continually increased our flushing where, where dead ends and the state requires that you go out to every single dead end that you have, and you have to flush every month that dead end. With the current staff that is only comprised of 12 individuals that operate our water production facilities as they stand right now, this team is part of that, of that program. They will take over and, and take over the 100 samples that are now being increased to 120 samples per month, run by TCQ and due to population projections by TCQ using them. It also will take over, over 1,000 flushing points that we have within the system to be able to manage that. Those take about a half hour per, per point to go through monthly. So this crew would do that and then also enhance and take a look at our water quality calls that do come in for individuals that have concerns at their residence, and then we can go out and sample test and do that responsibly, instead of deferring off and taking staff away from our plants and running that operation there. So that's what that staff will help do, answer that, so thank you.
So just to be clear, it's a function of the system growing and having us 20% increase the number of samples?
Correct.
And it's all on the freshwater side, has nothing to do with the wastewater side?
That is correct, this is all potable water and continuing as our system grows. Mr. Pearson, with regards to Massey Oaks in the south, that system will continue to expand, that'll add more testing, more population, and continue to meet compliance there.
One more clarification.
All right, any other?
I just wanted one more classic clarification. So on our wastewater side, the contractors that we brought in and to perform the functions of, of the employees that we lost, wasn't that cost on par with what we were already paying those employees already?
So with that, we only have two individuals that are providing supervisory, and they're providing it up to four hours per day, five days a week. Our staff, we are still hiring, we are still backfilling vacancies that we have, and we are still filling the individuals that have left to run our system. That program was a short program, so four months worth of time. That is all that the outside contractor was able to allocate and allow for us for their own staff obligations and their own plants that they manage and maintain. So that has allowed us to address and revisit our operating procedures, what we do, how we operate, and we've all been pleased with both the help that, that we have been provided and also how our staff has responded and made changes. It is going very well, and we're looking to continue to bring on additional staff to fill those vacancies.
But from a dollars and cents standpoint, we're on par with like pay, pay scale with the, with the employees that we already had, right? So it's not like we were charged an additional amount of money to bring these contractors on to operate for those four hours that they were providing.
Correct, we're paying, we're paying at a, at their rates plus their markup, they are a governmental agency, so it's cost, cost plus travel time, vehicles, et cetera.
So the answer is yes, right?
I know it's a roundabout, but yes.
So yes, that was a, it's very similar, but it's a very special situation with another governmental entity for a short period of time.
Robert, you mentioned, oh, sorry, sorry, remember. You mentioned gray water as, at one time when you were talking about, is that some way, something we could do with, that save money in the long run?
If you're talking reuse water?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Cade. Yes, we had put in your packet early in a white paper about reuse and taking a look at that. And that would be a directive for council to provide in their long-term, long vision planning. We have opportunities out there, we have set ourselves up with Region H, which is the Region H Water Plan, to have opportunities for reuse in there. We can take a look at our wastewater plants for reuse to do landscaping in the medians, our parks could benefit from that as well. And it would also take a look at a long term, as our city continues to grow, looking at dependency of trying to find more potable water that is going to be more costly if we can offset it with reuse, which is a water source that we've already bought, paid for, and cleaned, and then can return. So it's a long-term vision plan, and we'll take time to vet and go through, but it'll need to come also with your, your guidance as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else?
I wanted, we talked about having consensus, that was the word we used on certain changes. I want to see, is there any interest in going and finding an outside proposal on the, the water, maybe an outside vendor working on that? I'd like to at least throw that on the table, that we could have a robust discussion on that at some point. I know that may not be timely for getting this all completed, but it may be laying the groundwork for another budget down the line. Can we get a straw that there's an interest in at least looking at that proposal? I need, I need four people to nod their head.
I guess in regards to that, I don't, I don't know, I want staff to spend, to do a full RFQ or RFP, but I think it'd be good if, I guess, had staff done any sort of analysis on what that would look like.
Thanks for the question, I think Trent's looked at that, or on a high level, like you said, not an actual RFQ.
So we have talked to some companies and looked at that on a high level and looked at what some other cities have done in their transition plan as they've brought on their surface water plant. So we have an idea what that number is, and as part of looking at the additional positions for the surface water treatment plant, that was kind of an alternative supplemental request that was, that was brought forth in this budget process. So I think we can provide some additional information on that in, in our feedback package of what we're seeing as far as the, the cost there.
I think that'd be great, and then at the next discussion, if we can get consensus, we can go out.
I'd like to do that, and it looks like we've got some heads nodding. So thank you, Mayor Protem.
Got anything else, anybody else? Thanks, staff, but it's almost 1:00, so I appreciate y'all hanging in there, and we'll adjourn at 12:49.